The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
Present.
Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Gracia. Alderman Gracia. Alderman Calder. Alderman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Ballmer.
Present.
Alderman Martin. Alderman Grass.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
Here.
Alderman Howard.
Present.
Alderman Green.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd.
Rhodey's present.
I'm sorry, Alderman Todd.
Present.
Thank you. Alderman Davis.
Present.
Alderman Spencer.
Present.
Alderman Mohammed.
Here.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Vaquaro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Cone. Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Navarro.
Present.
President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Gracia. Alderman Calder.
Here.
Alderman Martin. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Cone. Twenty-four present.
A quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by our very own John Watson Jr., Reverend John Watson Jr. from Maple Temple. Reverend Watson?
God bless you. God bless you. We want to take this minute to recognize Ms. Connie Johnson, who had, Ms. Connie Johnson lost her mother, and we want to take a moment aside just to recognize her mother who passed away because of virus. We're praying for each and every one of you that have loved ones that have been affected by this virus, so we're praying for you. God bless you. We quote from the Holy Scriptures. Every mountain shall be exalted, every valley, every hill brought low, every mountain, every valley shall be exalted, every mountain and hill brought low, the crooked places shall be made straight, and the rough places smooth, and the glory of the Lord shall be revealed. Gracious God, heavenly Father, as we stand today grateful for the progress we've made as a nation but troubled by some of the present events that has happened, we honor and remember the life and the work of Dr. Martin Luther King as we remember and envision the dream that he had. As he would believe, we refuse to believe that the bank of justice is bankrupt or there is insufficient funds in the great vaults of opportunity in this nation. We believe that even though we face difficulties of today and tomorrow, we still have a dream deeply rooted in the American dream. As he, as he said, "I have a dream that one day this nation will rise up and live out the true meaning of its creed." We hold these truths, these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. And now God, use our elected officials as instruments of righteousness, allow their actions and their ordinance to move this community toward this dream of equality for all, justice for all, opportunity for all. Into your hands we commit our family, our community, our nation, our city. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Watson. Let's give Reverend Watson a big round of applause and thank you for opening us with prayer. We're gonna, under special order day, we're gonna take up our regular resolutions calendar, which can, line item twenty-one on the agenda. We have to change, we have to adopt a new resolution for the last day to, to introduce bills so that we can accept our COVID, our COVID funding in the city of St. Louis. So first reading the resolutions.
Resolution eighty-nine, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Boyd, changing the last date to introduce board bills.
Alderman from twenty-second, you recognize on resolution eighty-nine.
Mr. President, I move for unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection, hearing no objection, please proceed Alderman.
Yes, Mr. President, resolution eighty-nine, as you just stated, it moves, the last day to submit board bills from January the eighth to today, January the fifteenth, based on the resolution number seventy-three that the board passed on December the fourth.
All right, would you like to make a motion for adoption of resolution eighty-nine?
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of resolution eighty-nine.
Move by Alderman from twenty-second, second by Alderman from twenty-third, and also the Alderman from the nineteenth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. With that, we'll return, return to our regular order of business, introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the twenty-third.
As always, I would like to have my good friend Greg Meyer as my special guest.
All right, any further introductions?
Yes. Yes, I'd like to have Laura Hughes, my lead developer, as my special guest, and she represents Fluidly Development Corporation.
Welcome Laura. Any further introductions? Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my special guest Vice President-elect Kamala Harris. On Wednesday, we're gonna have a historic occasion where not only is she gonna remove herself as being the senator from California, she will become the Vice President and the President of the Senate. And much like this board that now has sixteen women to twelve men, women are coming to take over Congress, okay? Just like we did the Board of Aldermen. And so I hope that all the women and the few men that we have left will join me in making Vice President-elect Kamala Harris our special guest.
All right, let's make her our special guest. And her first order of business, her first order of business is gonna be to oversee what? You know what she's gonna be overseeing her first order? But she's ready. Any further, Alderman from the twin first.
Thank you, Mr. President. As my special guest today, I'd like to have Ms. Carmen Gamble, a community leader in a college-level neighborhood who is watching live via Zoom.
All right, welcome Ms. Gamble. Any further introductions, any further introductions, any further inductions? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We're here on January fifteenth. This is National Bagel Day, so go out and get yourself a bagel with a schmear. But more importantly, on this day in nineteen seventy-four, the Alderman from the twenty-third had a live-changing event when Happy Days premiered, and he got to see Patsy and Ralph Malth who changed his life forever.
Love it. Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes dated Friday, January the eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for approval. The minutes dated January the eighth, twenty twenty.
Move by Alderman from twenty-second, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second by Alderman from ninth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. Reporters city officials.
Reporters city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual, individuals for the appointment to the Missouri Botanical Garden Sub-District Advisory Board. The appointment of Ms. Jerry Kramer, whose term will expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, the appointment of Ms. Stacy Edwards, whose term expired September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I respectfully request your approval of the appointments. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz and Mayor.
Alderman from twelfth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Missouri Botanical Garden Sub-District Advisory Board.
I'm, I move for the approval of these two people to the sub-districts of the advisory board.
Move by Alderman from twelfth.
Objection!
There's been a, there's been a motion and a second. Who, who seconded? A bunch of people seconded.
Alderwoman Howard.
Alderman from the fourteenth, okay. The Alderman from the first.
Um, I object. Ms. Stacy Edwards, and I don't think that the Alderman from the twelfth is trying to step on my toes. She is from the first ward, and I, if she wants to sponsor her from my ward, I would not recommend she do that, and I don't think she meant to do that. But also, I would object because I would want her to come to go to committee, so that, and I know her personally, but I am opposed to these last-minute appointments, and it's why I did not agree to do this. And so the mayor's office seems to be going around a courtesy, so I'm gonna object and ask that they be sent to a committee. If this was Sterling Miller, I would object. I do not believe that we should be filling up, I think we're going around the, the whole purpose of appointments, which is to have them flowing regularly, not to let one person wait until the last minute and appoint all the people so that the new mayor doesn't have any appointments. And for that reason, my good friend, I'm asking that, that she separates the issue, that she sponsors, the twelfth ward sponsor the person who is in her ward and not sponsor the person who is in my ward, which is Stacy Edwards. And I would think that both of them should be sent to committee.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twelfth, you have three choices. One choice, you could separate the question, and that's a simple request, just of me to separate the question into multiple parts and vote each person, right? And you could vote your person out and then send the second one to committee, or just send both of them to committee, that's the other option, right? Or just, you know, move, you know, keep the current motion in play where you're, you know, wanting to pass both of them out today. So you can.
I will separate the motion.
All right, so we're gonna separate the most, the question, voting.
The question.
Yeah, it's gonna be Ms. Greer. Ms. Greer and Ms. Stacy Edwards. So.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Please state your point of order.
In the past, you know, these appointments from the mayor's office would be presented by the chairs of various committees that they were relevant to. So last week, we had, for instance, appointments to the ZMD board, those in the past have been handled by the Parks Chair. You know, we have a situation similarly this week where, you know, I as Park Chair have not been consulted on these appointments either, and instead they're being handled by various alderpersons. It used to be that any appointments that came forward that were relative to a committee at the Board of Aldermen, that the chair of that committee would be the one presenting the appointments to the full board. And then if there are any that were specific to neighborhoods, like special business districts, et cetera, that those would be presented by the alderperson who represents that specific area or who represents the person being appointed. When did that change? Because, you know, I have not.
Well, the, the mayor's office can choose to select any alderperson they want to, to introduce or to carry the measure. So they typically select whatever alderperson they'd like to carry the measure. In the past, I know under the previous mayor and other mayors, they would, they would start with the committee chairman and work their way down, but it's totally up to the discretion of the mayor as to who they would want to, you know, offer to carry their appointments over at the board. Because you remember, the mayor has the power to, to introduce measures, to vote, and to carry measures before the Board of Aldermen. So they, so they, they choose whoever they want to choose to carry those measures. But I know, like you said, different mayors, different mayors have had different policies and the way they've handled it. So, but that's, that's, that's the history, that's the way I remember it, know it to be.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the first.
Just a point of order. Once somebody moves to separate the question, you have no choice, you have to separate the question. I'm hoping that, right, let me think, I'm hoping that she will just make the motion, if she wants to push the twelfth ward through, but she will withdraw the motion concerning the resident from the first ward, because I do want that to go to committee, and I want people to get to know Stacy. It's not that I'm not supportive of her. As I said, I don't think these are good appointments this late, but if they're gonna be this late, I think people ought to be able to ask questions. And I, so it is a personal friend of mine, okay, but I still don't agree with the way that it's being done. So I just wanted to make that because it's said to her that she could just keep the motion the way it is. Once someone separates, you have to separate.
No, what I, what I, what I said is that, you know, one of, one of her choices is to try to just vote it the way, you know, according to her first motion, or to separate.
But she can't. What I'm, she can't. Once somebody it's not a motion to separate, that is an absolute motion, you have to separate, because people can, you can always vote separately on people, okay?
No, but I, but.
That's all I'm saying.
But that's what, that's why I asked her.
That's what you meant?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I meant, that's what I meant. So, so, and we were in the process of that when the point of order was called by Alderman from twenty-fifth.
I also have another point of order, Mr. President.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Well, actually, it's more of a motion than a point of order. Actually, I would make a motion that these both get referred to the Parks Committee, you know, because I think the mayor's office did not consult me as Chair of Parks and Environmental on either any of these appointments for the ZMD. It's very frustrating when that happens. You know, we've had conversations, and I know we haven't met a lot as a committee over the past year, but in the past, you know, we have had conversations around representation on these various boards and what that looks like and ensuring representation across the city is a point of, you know, concern for members of the committee, and I would, I would very much want to ensure that we're addressing those concerns. And so I would motion that we refer both of these to the Parks and Environmental Committee for consideration. Second.
A motion, a motion to refer is always in order. So it's been moved by Alderman from, let me see. We moved by Alderman from twenty-fifth, second by Alderman from the first, that we refer mayor's appointments to the Missouri Botanical Garden Sub-District Advisory Board to, to committee. Any discussion? Alderman from the first.
Could I make a friendly amendment and say refer it to the Parks Committee, so we could be specific?
Refer to the Parks Committee. Right. Any, any further discussion? Alderman from the twelfth, or any further discussion?
Um, I was, I don't, being new, I'm gonna use the, I'm not gonna be able to say I'm new for long, so, but I'm still new. I didn't know any of this, and no offense to you, Alderwoman Tyus, I know you know that none was intended.
Yeah.
Um, I guess the, the lack of education on my part with the ins and outs of committees and, and alderpeople, I don't know them yet. I'm fine with this going to committee. I'm also fine with, the mayor did reach out and ask if that appointment was okay with me, and I wrote back to her and said that it was. So there's that. I am also respectful of the rules, and if these, if it's really intended to go to a committee prior to coming to the full board, then I want to follow the rule. So that's where I stand.
And just, just, just to, so it's been, it's been moved by Alderman from twenty-fifth, second by Alderman from the first, that we refer the mayor's appointments to the Missouri Botanical Garden Sub-District Advisory Board to committee. Takes a simple majority, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please, is there a request for roll call?
Roll call.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Gracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin. Alderman Grass.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Rhodey's aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Sorry, aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Martin. Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Twenty-eight aye votes.
My votes, staying motion of Alderman from twenty-fifth, and mayor's appointments for the Missouri Botanical Sub-District Advisory Board has been referred to Parks.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment and reappointment to the Locust Central Special Business District. The appointment of Mr. Sultan Meghig, whose term will expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, the reappointment of Mr. John Hayden, whose term will expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, the reappointment of Mr. Ken Neumberger, whose term will expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, the reappointment of Mr. Michael Berkman, whose term will expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, the appointment of Mr. David Chefly, whose term will expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, the appointment of Ms. Karen Drake, whose term will expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. I respectfully request your approval of the appointments. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz and Mayor.
Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize on mayor's appointments to the Locust Central Business District.
Mr. President, I'm going to yield to the alderperson of the sixth ward.
The alderperson of the sixth ward, I do not think is here today. I have not heard her make any of the roll.
Mister President.
Looks like she's there.
I'm here.
Oh, there you go. Alderman from the six, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President. Due to an inadvertent mistake, I'm not seeking approval of the mayor's appointments at this time.
Okay.
That is the extent of office of the mayor.
Thank you. We will dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? We'll dispense with line items.
Mr. President?
Yes, Alderman from the twenty-first.
I'm sorry, my hand was raised, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I would like.
Oh, they changed, they changed. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. President, I would like to move Board Bill seventy-seven off the informal calendar and place it on the perfection.
Third reading, seventy-seven as amended, place it on the regular third reading calendar. It's right now, it's on the third reading informal calendar, so Board Bill, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that, place Board Bill seventy-seven as amended on the regular third reading calendar. Would anyone like to take any further bills off or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? All right, we'll dispense with line items seven through, seven through ten. Alderman from twenty-second, you recognize. Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize suspend the rules.
Okay, I'm sorry, we're, where are we on the?
Yeah, to suspend the rules for the introduce, introduction of the Board Bill two thirty-nine.
Mr. President, I move for suspension of rules for the purpose of introducing Board Bill two twenty-nine.
Second.
Second.
Move by Alderman from the, hold on a second. Board Bill two thirty-nine, I believe it is, Alderman.
I like to amend my motion for suspension of rules for the purpose of introducing Board Bill two thirty-nine.
Yes.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman from twenty-second, second by Alderman from the tenth, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Gracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin. Alderman Grass.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Gunther. I'm sorry, was that a aye?
Aye.
Alderman Martin. Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. Twenty-six aye votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the twenty-second. By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the twenty seconds. Suspend the rules for the introduction of board bill two thirty nine. Madam clerk, place board bill two thirty nine on the first reading of board bill's calendar.
So noted.
And refer it to the coronavirus special committee.
So noted.
First reading of board bills.
Board bill two thirty nine introduced by President Reed, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Murphy, and Alderman Boyd. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimative Empowerment wherein the Board of Alderman authorized the receipt of and appropriates funds appropriate appropriated by the United States Congress to the Department of Treasury Treasury under the House of Representatives Bill one three three for emergency rental and housing assistance payments by local governments for emergency health purposes under the United States Department of Health and Human Services grant programs and for the low income household drinking water and water waste energy, I'm sorry, water waste emergency assistance program and containing emergency clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the coronavirus special committee, uh, board bill two thirty nine.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of neighborhood development with a due pass recommendation. Board bill one seventy five sponsored by Alderman Nigracia, an ordinance approving a lighting study and redevelopment plan for twenty seven forty one Locust Street redevelopment area. Board bill one eighty two sponsored by Alderman Gunther, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated October twenty seventh, twenty twenty for the twenty eight hundred South Jefferson Avenue area. Board bill two zero five sponsored by Alderman Bosley. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated October twenty second, twenty nineteen for the twenty twenty five Agnes Street area. Board bill two twenty sponsored by Alderman Hubbard, an ordinance approving a lighting study and a redevelopment plan for the two thousand through twenty twenty North Broadway two zero zero one North Second Street redevelopment area. Board bill two twenty seven sponsored by Alderman Hubbard, an ordinance approving a lighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirteen nineteen and thirteen twenty one Ben Street and twenty five hundred North Fourteenth Street redevelopment area. The following board bill was reported out of Health and Human Services with the due pass recommendation. Board bill two zero seven sponsored by Alderman Spencer and the following alderpersons: Nigracia, Green, Navarro, Middlebrook, Rice, Todd, Alderman Boyd, and Gunther. An ordinance relating to food preparation and handling adopting chapters one to seven of the National Food Code two zero for twenty seventeen edition and further additions as part of one of the St. Louis Food Code adopting additional provisions pertaining to mobile food service, temporary food service, and the compliance and enforcement as a part two of the St. Louis Food Code repealing ordinance six eight five nine seven, repealing ordinance seven one one zero six pertaining to temporary food permits approved April eighteenth, twenty twenty, and adopting in lieu thereof a new St. Louis Food Code to be codified in the revised code of the City of St. Louis, chapter eleven point four two containing severability, effective date, and emergency clauses. The following board bills were reported out of the Streets Committee with the due pass recommendation. Board bill one seventy six sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in Virginia, in Virginia from Shoto, North Relief Feet to a point said point being vacated, grassy in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described in accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with section one four of article twenty one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board bill two eighteen sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service of the City of St. Louis establishing multiple public works and improvement projects within the City of St. Louis. Board bill two thirty one sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance establishing a two-way stop site at the intersection of North Sarah Street and Westminster Place regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on North Sarah at the intersection of North Sarah Street and Westminster Place and containing an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of HUD's Committee with the due pass recommendation. Board bill one fifty eight sponsored by Alderman Howard, Alderman Murphy, and Alderman Con. An ordinance pertaining to special use districts establishing the Bevo Mill Area Special Use District, providing definitions and finding pertaining findings pertaining to said Bevo S U D, further providing use and conditional use regulations for said Bevo S U D and contain the emergency clause and the severability clause. Board bill one sixty sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Spencer, and Alderman Davis. An ordinance pertaining to Oscar Waring House located at two eleven, I'm sorry, twelve eleven Tower Grove Avenue, having as subject matter the designation of the property as the City of St. Louis Landmark containing definitions, landmark standards, and a severability clause. Board bill one seventy four sponsored by Alderman Bosley and Alderman Mohammed, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated November seventeenth, twenty twenty for the Penrose, North Grand, Cassuth, and Fair area. Board bill one eighty six sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on December second, twenty twenty to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from C, multiple family dwelling district, to G, local commercial and office district in city block two two nine four, so as to include the described parcel of land in city block two two nine four and containing an emergency clause. Board bill one eighty six sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on December second, twenty twenty to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from the K, unrestricted district to the H area commercial district in city block nine zero nine seven, so as to include the described parcels of land in city block nine zero nine seven and contain that emergency clause. Board bill one eight eight sponsored by Alderman Orion, Alderman Spencer, and Alderman Davis. An ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on December second, twenty twenty to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from A, single family dwelling district, to C, multiple family dwelling district in city block four six three four point zero five, so as to include the described parcels of land in city block four six three four point zero five and contain an emergency clause. Board bill one eighty nine sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on December second, twenty twenty to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from the K, unrestricted district to the H area commercial district in city block three nine one eight point zero three, so as to, so as to include the described parcels of land in city block three nine one eight point zero three and contain an emergency clause. Board bill one ninety one sponsored by Alderman Hubbard, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on December second, twenty twenty to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from K, unrestricted district to H area commercial district in city block three two zero, so as to include the described parcels of land in city block three two zero and contain an emergency clause. Board bill one ninety two as amended sponsored by Alderman Calder, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated December fifteenth, twenty twenty for the three hundred through three three eight North Fourth Street area. Board bill one ninety three as amended sponsored by Alderman Calder, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated December fifteenth, twenty twenty for the ten fourteen Spruce Street area. Board bill one ninety four sponsored by Alderman Collins Mohammed, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated December fifteenth, twenty twenty for the forty one hundred through forty one twenty two West, West Florissant Avenue and forty five sixty nine Alice Avenue. Board bill one ninety five sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated November seventeenth, twenty twenty for the five zero two five Dalemore Boulevard area. Board bill two zero four sponsored by Alderman Spencer, an ordinance amending the redevelopment plan for the Arkansas Chippewa Marine Redevelopment Area. Board bill two zero six as amended sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated December fifteenth, twenty twenty for eighteen zero one Washington Avenue. Board bill two thirteen sponsored by Alderman Evans. An ordinance approving a lighting study and a redevelopment plan for the North Newstead Avenue Cottage, Whittier Street, and Page Boulevard redevelopment area. Board bill two fourteen committee sub sponsored by Alderman Todd, President Reed, Alderman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Davis, and Alderman Calder. An ordinance designating a portion of the City of St. Louis, Missouri as a redevelopment area known as the Kingsway Commercial Redevelopment Area pursuant to the Real Property Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act, adopting and approving a redevelopment plan, adopting and approving a development project with respect thereto adopting tax increment financing within the redevelopment area, making findings with respect thereto established of the Kingsway Commercial Special Allocation Fund, authorizing certain action by city officials and containing the severability clause. Board bill two fifteen committee sub sponsored by Alderman Todd, President Reed, Alderman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Davis, and Alderman Calder. An ordinance authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and Kingsway Development LLC prescribing the form and details of said agreement, authorizing other related actions in connection with agreement and containing severability clause. Board bill two twenty five sponsored by Alderman Boyd, Alderman Boyd, and Alderman Davis, an ordinance approving a lighting study and a redevelopment plan for the Riverview Boulevard, West Florissant Avenue, Lillian Avenue, and Alcott Avenue redevelopment area. Board bill two thirty five as amended sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated November seventeenth, twenty twenty for Natural Bridge, North Grand, St. Louis Avenue, and North Vander Vanda area. The following board bills were reported out of public safety with a due pass recommendation. Board bill two twelve committee sub sponsored by Alderman Boyd, Alderman Collins Mohammed, Alderman Vaquaro, and Alderman Howard, an ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the City of St. Louis a non-binding preferential vote authorized by Article two, Section nine of the City's Charter to vote on the question of whether the city should close the Division of Corrections Medium Security Institute in order to assist the Board of Alderman, Mayor, and Comptroller in the management and direction of the Medium Security Institute. Board bill two twenty one committee sub as amended sponsored by Alderman Oldenburg, President Reed, and the following alderpersons: Clark Hubbard, Collins Mohammed, Vaquaro, Davis, Murphy, Green, Howard, Gunther, Ballmer, Calder, Spencer, Orion, Grass, Evans, Alderman Boyd, Nigracia, Martin, and Orion. An ordinance to amend the City of St. Louis revised so as to permit the Board of Trustees of the Fireman's Retirement System to simultaneously act as the Board of Trustees of the St. Louis Fire, St. Louis Firefighters Retirement Plan, but not until such time as amendments to Missouri Revised Statutes eighty seven point one four zero, eighty seven point one four five, eighty seven point one five five, eighty seven point two six zero, and eighty seven point three five zero have become law to permit the Board of Trustees of the Fireman's Retirement System to simultaneously act as the, as the Board of Trustees of the St. Louis Firefighters Retirement Plan and contain an effective date. Board bill two twenty six sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance amending ordinance seven zero nine three two concerning recreational fires to prohibit recreational fires in the locations other than a backyard or side yard, so long as the recreational fire is not visible from an adjacent public way other than an alley. Board bill two thirty two sponsored by Alderman Tyus, an ordinance prohibiting the issuance of a package or drink liquor licenses for any currently unlicensed premises within the boundaries of the first ward for a period of three years from the effective date thereof containing an exception allowing during the moratorium period for the transfer of existing license under certain circumstances and contain an emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading report of standing committees.
Alderman from the twenty second, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of board. I move for suspension of the rules for the purpose of placing board bill two twelve committee substitute on the perfection calendar.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman from twenty second, second about Alderman from tenth. Any discussion?
Previous roll.
There's been a request for previous roll. Hearing no objection.
Objection.
There was been an objection to the previous roll. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
I'm passing because I don't know what two twelve is.
Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bos.
Aye, sorry.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Nigracia.
No.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther.
No.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin. Alderman Grass. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
No.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Rhodey's aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
No.
Alderman Con.
No.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Navarro.
No.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Tyus. Alder, Alderman Rice.
No.
Alderman Martin. Alderman Grass.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Present.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I missed Alderman Tyus or not.
I'm sorry, I voted aye, aye.
Alderman Martin. Twenty aye votes. Seven no votes and one vote in present.
By your vote, you stay in the motion of the Alderman from the twenty second. Madam clerk, please place board bill two twelve committee substitute at the end of the regular perfection calendar.
Two twelve. So noted.
We will dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board bill one fifty seven sponsored by Alderman Nigracia, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in an irregular portion of Pine Street from the western right of way of twentieth street to the western right of way line of twenty first street in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as. as herein after described, in accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with Section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one sixty-one Sponsored by Alderwoman and Gracia. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in a twenty-foot wide west, I'm sorry, twenty-foot wide east-west alley in City Block six four seven two, beginning at Twentieth Street and extending west release to its terminus and bounded by Olive on the north, Twentieth on east, and Pine on the south in the City of St. Louis, Missouri as herein after described in accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with Section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one seventy-three Sponsored by Alderwoman and Gracia. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in a triangular tract of land located on the northwest corner of Twentieth Street and Pine. The same area was previously dedicated per platform thirty-four, page thirty-eight in the City of St. Louis, Missouri as herein after described in accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with Section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one seventy-seven Sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in Second Street from Tyler South in the City of St. Louis, City of St. Louis, Missouri as herein after described in accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with Section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one eighty Sponsored by Alderman Todd. An ordinance establishing a two-way, two, two-way stop sites at the eastern and western intersection of Whittier Street and Washington Boulevard, regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on Washington Boulevard, at the eastern intersection of Whittier Street and Washington Boulevard, and regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on Washington Boulevard, at the eastern intersection of Whittier Street and Washington Boulevard, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one eighty-four Sponsored by Alderman Collins Mohammed, pursuant to ordinance six eight nine three seven, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Dorothy Jackson Johnson Way, which shall begin at the intersection of Porter Avenue and Alice Avenue, run north on Alice Avenue to the intersection of Alice Avenue and West Florissant. Board Bill one ninety-seven Sponsored by Alderman Rhodey. An ordinance repealing Ordinance five nine zero four three, approved on February the tenth nineteen eighty-four, which closed Swan, Norfolk, and Vista Avenues at the east line of Tyler. The ordinance authorized and directs the Director of Streets to reopen Norfolk and Vista Avenues, but to keep Swan Avenue closed and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety Sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimant and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Mayor and Comptroller of the City of St. Louis on behalf of the city to enter into and execute an agreement or agreements with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Office of Healthy Homes and Lead Hazard Control being offered pursuant to federal fiscal year twenty twenty, notice of funding availability for the Lead Hazard Reduction Demonstration Grant Program, and directing the Comptroller to issue warrants thereon upon the city treasury and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill two zero two Sponsored by Alderman Boyd, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderman Vocoro, Alderwoman Howard, and Alderman Mohammed. An ordinance authorizing and directing the Chief of Police on behalf of the Mayor and the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the Missouri Department of Public Safety, Public Safety Office of Homeland Security to fund the twenty nineteen Project Safe Neighborhoods Programs upon the approval of the Board of Estimant and Apportionment to expand funds by entering into contracts otherwise for grant purposes and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one six eight Sponsored by Alderwoman Davis. An ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimant and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller of the City of St. Louis, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute on behalf of the city the assignment and assumption of interest in lease agreement AL two three zero and the consent of the City of St. Louis between Spire, CNG, Inc., Leclid Venture Corp. Its terms are more fully described in Section one of this ordinance, contain the severability clause and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one seventy-one Sponsored by Alderwoman Davis. An ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estimant and Apportionment that provides for financial incentives for air service at St. Louis Lambert International Airport, contain the severability clause and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one seventy-two Sponsored by Alderwoman Davis. An ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estimant and Apportionment, providing for the transfer of one million dollars that the City of St. Louis, the owner and operator, the owner of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, intends to transfer from the Airport Development Fund through the Airport Contingency Fund into the Airport Revenue Fund, contain the severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill one eighty-three As amended, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis. An ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimant and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller of the City of St. Louis, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute on behalf of the city the O H M Concession Group LLC, Local Concept Food and Beverage First Amendment and Restated Concession Agreement. AL one two zero Between the city and O H M Concession Group LLC granting to concessionaire subject to, subject to and in accordance with, contain the severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill one eighty-five Sponsored by Alderwoman Davis. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimant and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller for the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute on behalf of the City of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, First Amendment to its airport use and lease agreement, and when applicable, its airport use and lease agreement with a cargo addendum containing the severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one nine six Sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook. An ordinance authorizing the execution of a new lease agreement between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and the United Fruit and Produce Company of Missouri Corporation for certain land at or near two 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 six North First Street in the city for a period of five years with four five-year mutual options, contain the severability clause. Board Bill one ninety-eight Sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard, President Reed, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Gracia, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderman Colder, Alderwoman Middlebrook, and Alderman Vocoro. An ordinance authorizing and directing the Acting Director of the City of St. Louis Department of Health to accept a two hundred thousand dollar grant from the National Foundation for the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, Inc., with the project name of COVID-nineteen Care Kids for Faith-Based Communities and known as Project Ten Eighty-Five, containing emergency clause. That is the extent of perfection consent calendar.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion? I got you. I'll get you all. Yeah, I'll get you Alderwoman. First, I get the motion and then we'll. Alderman from twenty-second, recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar?
Yes, first, Mr. President, can we place Board Bill one seventy on the informal?
We have a whole list of them. So, so we're going to get the motion, then we're going to go through the whole list.
No problem. Mr. President, I move for adoption of the perfection calendar.
Perfection consent calendar. Moved by Alderman from twenty-second and. Second by Alderman from tenth and Alderman from thirteenth. Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, the, I only want two oh two put on the regular calendar because I want the Alderman to explain it. The things that I need to take off are on the perfection third reading calendar, okay?
Oh, on the third.
That I spoke to you early.
Okay, okay. So, Board Bill two oh.
I'm not perfection, I'm sorry. Because they're reading consent.
I got, I got, I got, I got. You said two oh two? You, you're muted now.
Two oh two, yes, that's correct.
All right, Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Place Board Bill two oh two at the end of the regular perfection calendar. All right, and Alderman from the twenty-second?
Yes, Mr. President, place Board Bill one seventy on the informal calendar.
Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill number one seventy on the perfection informal calendar. Alderman from the ninth?
Thank you, Mr. President. Since we are in perfection, I was just going to ask that my name be added to one ninety and one ninety-nine as amended.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please make note of that, one ninety and one ninety-nine for Alderman from the ninth.
Mr. President.
Alderman from nineteenth.
Mr. President, could I have my name added to Board Bill one ninety?
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. All right, if we're going to have a bunch of them, we'll, we'll have to move that bill to the regular perfection calendar. And Alderman from the twenty-fourth?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to ask that my name be added to Board Bill one ninety.
All right. Why don't we do this? Why don't we move Board Bill one ninety to the regular perfection calendar? Let's see, hold on a second. Okay, so we have the ninth, twenty-fourth, nineteenth, Alderman from the fourth?
Yes. Chair, Mr. Press, Mr. Chair, I would like to have my name added to Board Bill one ninety as well.
Okay, and the fourth? Any further discussion?
And the thirteenth, Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem.
And the twelfth, please, thank you, sorry.
That's all right.
And the eleventh as well, thank you.
Eleven.
Fourteen.
Can I just make a motion that we do it in vain? No, we'll have to take it off of the, the informal calendar and put it on the regular perfection calendar for that, and we can, if, but if there's going to be an objection to anybody, then we've burnt a bunch of time. The twenty-third? All right, all right, that's it. So it's ninth, twenty-fourth, nineteen, four, thirteen, twenty, twelve, eleven, fourteen, twenty-third.
Mr. President, could you add eight, please?
And then eight. All right, thank you, and twenty-eight.
And fifteen.
And fifteen.
Ten, I guess, I'm probably the only one not on her, am I?
That's six, please.
And then six. All right. All right, thank you. So, and then Alderman from twenty-second, you had, which one? You've already moved yours off of the calendar.
I did.
Okay. It's been moved, been moved by Alderman from twenty-second that we adopt our perfection consent calendar as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Board Bills for perfection.
Board Bill one seventy-eight Sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard. An ordinance amended ordinance number seven zero five zero one, approving and authorizing the execution of a First Amendment Redevelopment Agreement between the City of St. Louis and Altera Jefferson Arms LLC, authorizing other related actions and contain the severability clause.
Alderman from the fifth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill one seventy-eight?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I rise and support a Board Bill one seventy-eight.
Would you like to make a motion for perfection?
Yes, I would like to move to perfect Board Bill one seventy-eight.
Moved by Alderman from the fifth, second by Alderman from the nineteenth, and numerous others. Alderman from the, from the fifth, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, for correcting me on that. I, I move for perfection of Board Bill one seventy-eight. This is a project that has come through our board before back in two thousand and seventeen. And what this Board Bill does is it amends the redevelopment agreement between the city and the developer Altera, Mr. Jefferson Arms Building downtown, which is a major development in our city. It has been on delay for some time, but it's moving again. It's approximately over two hundred and thirty-five units on the Tucker side and two hundred and twenty-five apartments in the back. It will be a welcome addition to our neighborhood. They have experienced some challenges, but they have rectified a lot of their issues regarding debt that was owed to the city, and that's something that just happened a couple of days ago. So I'm proud to say that they are in good standing with their taxes, and I just ask for you all's favorable support. The Jefferson Arms Building is a jewel in our downtown, and I would love to have the residents in my ward, and there's a lot of commercial space, and it's just a welcome addition for the city.
All right, thank you, thank you. Alderman from the fifteenth?
Thank you, I just want to request a roll call when we vote on it.
All right, we will. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty, from the twenty-fourth?
Thank you, Mr. President. Would the Alderwoman from the fifth yield for questions?
Alderman from the fifth, you yield a question to the Alderman from the twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth, please proceed.
Thank you, Alderwoman Hubbard. Just one quick, I'm just trying to wrap my head around some of this. That building is a beautiful building, and certainly I want it to, to remain there. I think it's kind of a keystone downtown there. I know that the developer had quite a bit of tax problems in the, in the past, and you mentioned that they had now come current with all those taxes, so they're not behind on, on taxes anymore.
That's correct.
Okay, that, that's the only question I had. I wanted to make sure that in the agreement that there was some requirement that they come current with their taxes, but it sounds like they are current with their taxes.
It was in the agreement.
Okay, perfect, well, thank you so much.
All right, Alderman from the nineteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to comment on this project. I like the way that the Alderwoman from the fifth handled this project over the last couple of years. She made sure that movement only took place when they adhered to our requirements. She made sure that the union issues were heard as well as you. I remember the Board of V and A meeting where you had it heard, although that wasn't the purpose of that meeting, and the agenda was, taking up, taking that up on the agenda was very important because our unions must be recognized, and our employees here in the City of St. Louis have the right to prevailing wages, and irregardless to anything else that goes on, we will always keep our eye on that. And I just wanted to applaud you and the Alderwoman from the fifth ward for continuing to keep vigilance on that project. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman from the fifth, please, and Madam Clerk, please add my name to the bill. Alderman from the eleventh?
And mine too.
And Alderman from the nineteenth. Alderman from the eleventh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have more of a comment than a question, but from my conversations, there is no deal on this as far as with any of the building trades association here in St. Louis. So, that's my, just my intel on this, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman from the twenty-second?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor, please.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that, add Alderman from the twenty-second, our floor leader.
The fourth as well.
And the Alderman from the fourth as well.
And the twenty-first, please.
And the twenty-first.
And the twenty-sixth, please.
And the twenty-sixth.
And the second, please.
And the second.
And the twenty-seventh.
And the twenty-seventh.
And the third.
And the third.
And the sixteenth, please.
And the sixteenth, please.
And the sixteenth. Anything, any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the fifth, you recognize the close.
I renew my motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman from the fifth, second by Alderman from the nineteenth, and Alderman from the second, excuse me, twenty-first, that we perfect Board Bill one seventy-eight. Is there a request for roll call?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll. That's right.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Iglesias.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
No.
Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Present.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Rhodey, Rhodey's aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, could you change Alderman Rice to aye, please?
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Con. Twenty-four, aye vote, one no vote, and one voting present.
Aye vote, stay in the motion, Alderman from the fifth, and perfected Board Bill one seventy-eight. Congratulations, Alderman from the fifth.
Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Board Bill one ninety-nine, committee sub, sponsored by Alderman Calder, President Reed, Alderman Davis, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Martin, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Iglesias, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Middlebrook, and Alderman Gunther. Pursuant to ordinance six eight nine three seven, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Kim Massey Way, which shall begin at the intersection of South Broadway and Siri Street and run south on South Broadway to the intersection of South Broadway and Grasshirt Street.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill one ninety-nine, committee substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President. Point of order, this is actually, it's as amended, it's one ninety-nine as amended, and I move to perfect Board Bill one ninety-nine as amended.
They've been moved by Alderman from seventh, second by Alderman from the tenth, that we perfect Board Bill one ninety-nine as amended. Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief here. This is very simple. This is simply a, a bill to, for an honorary street name, not usually very controversial, and I certainly don't think this one is. This would be a bill to, to honorarily name the seven hundred block of South Broadway, Kim Massey Way. Kim Massey, as we all know, is a, an icon in St. Louis. She passed away last year, I believe. Ms. Massey was a regular at the now shuttered deal on Broadway, at the Broadway Oyster Bar, at many of our taverns there in the, in the seven hundred block of South Broadway. And, and the goal here is to actually have a little party and an unveiling of new sign in April, which I believe corresponds around her birthday. Some of the regulars at the establishments down there are planning that. I know there'll be a mayoral proclamation, and it's my hope that we could embank, embank this, this Board Bill to show our unanimous support and our love for, for Kim Massey. I think it'd be a great honor for her and her family. So if it's all right, I would, I would move to embank this.
Removed by Alderman from the seventh and seconded by a whole host of people. Yeah, Alderman from the nineteenth, Alderman from the twenty-first, and there are a whole bunch of people that we embank. Resolution, I'm, excuse me, Board Bill one ninety-nine as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Board Bill one ninety-nine as amended is now in bank. Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you. In closing, I'd just say I want to also thank Todd Allen and, and the music community that's very active on South Broadway, who gathered signatures in support of this and, and did the heavy lifting. And with that, I renew my motion.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from seventh, seconded by Alderman from the tenth, that we perfect Board Bill one ninety-nine as amended and also embank. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries.
Board Bill two hundred, sponsored by Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Howard, and Alderman Boyd. An ordinance approving the contract between the city of St. Louis and the persistent surveillance system doing business as community support program and directing the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department and other city officials to enter into such contract and related agreements and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the sixteenth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill two hundred.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to place Board Bill two hundred floor substitute on the informal calendar, please.
Madam Clerk, please, please make note of that. Place Board Bill two hundred on the informal calendar, perfection informal calendar. Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry, so noted.
Okay. Please proceed, Madam Clerk.
Board Bill two zero one, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Vaquero, and Alderman Howard. An ordinance authorizing and directing the chief of police on half, on behalf of the mayor and the city of St. Louis to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the Missouri Department of Public Safety, Office of Homeland Security, and to fund the two thousand and twenty Operation Legend Grant Program upon approval of the Board of Estiment and Apportement, and to expand funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for grant purposes and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill two zero one.
Mr. President, members of the board, move for perfection of Board Bill two zero one.
Moved by Alderman from twenty-second. Second by Alderman from twenty.
Second.
Twenty-third, and the twenty-first, and the fourteenth. Alderman from the twenty-second, please proceed.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, Board Bill two zero one basically entered into this grant agreement to pay for police overtime last year, so the work has pretty much been done. We're playing catch-up on being reimbursed for police overtime during operations.
Okay. Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the fifteenth.
I'd like to request a roll call.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from twenty-third, twenty-first, and fourteenth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans. Alderman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Iglesias. Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin. Alderman Grass.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
No.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Evans. Alderman Iglesias.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. Twenty-six, aye votes and one no vote.
Aye vote, stay in the motion, Alderman from twenty-second, and perfected Board Bill two zero one.
Board Bill two twelve, committee sub, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, Alderman Collins Mohammed, Alderman Vaquero, and Alderman Howard. An ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the city of St. Louis a non-binding preferential vote authorized by Article Two, Section Nine of the city's charter to vote on the question of whether the city should close the Division of Corrections Medium Security Institution in order to assist the Board of Alderman, Mayor, and Comptroller in, in the management and direction of the Medium Security Institute.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill two twelve, committee substitute.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for perfection of Board Bill two twelve, committee substitute.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-second. Twenty-third, there's a whole bunch of them. I'll just say the twenty-third for now, I think it was the seventh and some others, but twenty-third for sure. Alderman from the twenty-second, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Board Bill two twelve, committee substitute, is basically placing before the voters a non-binding preferential vote on whether or not we should close the workhouse. I think it would be eye-opening either way. It would help us, you know, come up with good policy as relate to closing the workhouse. Certainly, the coalition to close the workhouse has been working diligently for the past three or four years on this particular issue. Unfortunately for me, I was finding that many people in my community were not really aware of it, and they were against it. And so I just thought, in order to, you know, validate whether or not this is a good policy decision, that we should put it before the voters and let the voters decide. And certainly, I understand, again, there's been a whole lot of work done by the coalition. I've been told there's been a, a lot of community engagement. And I thought this would be an exciting initiative, because if I did a lot of work, in which I'm told the coalition has done, it will validate all the hard work that I've put into this initiative for the past three or four years. MSI belongs to the city of St. Louis, and the voters deserve a right to give us input on whether or not they would like it closed. And so, again, I thought it would be something that's real simple, something that people would get excited about, especially the coalition. But once it got introduced, you know, Twitter blew up with a whole lot of anger and disappointment, which is really puzzling to me. I mean, anytime that we can ask the public for their opinion, I think that's a good thing as far as public discourse. Again, I said in the committee, sometimes we may put something before our constituents and they vote for it, or they may put something before us, an initial for us to do, and it may not be the right thing to do. And we have to deal with that. And there are times that things are put before us, and it's a great thing to do. And we should govern ourselves accordingly. So all this animosity and, and all this, you know, hoopla about it's a bad idea, I'm just bewildered. I'm kind of beside myself on it. Again, process is everything. I want residents in the twenty-second ward and across this city to weigh in on this important issue. Now, does this stop the workhouse from being closed? Absolutely not. It will not. And I am the only Alderman that voted for Board Bill ninety-two, which keeps being thrown up in our face because the board unanimously voted for ninety-two, and therefore the workhouse shall be closed. It didn't mean that much to me. I voted for it with a lot of trepidation because I thought December the thirty-first was unrealistic, and it was not practical. And guess what? It wasn't realistic, and it was not practical. Because of COVID nineteen, we needed that institution open so that we can move detainees from the Justice Center over to MSI because of public safety and health concerns. So I'm excited about putting it before the people. And all the progressive people in the city of St. Louis that always want government to work well for the city, I would think that they will welcome this and want it to, but I'm wrong on that. And that's okay, because we're all entitled to our opinion, and we were all elected to represent a specific group of people. I'm not a citywide elected official, so my only constituency is the twenty-second ward. And I'm speaking up on behalf of my constituents, and I'm encouraging all my colleagues to support this on behalf of their constituents. I'll take any questions, Mr. President.
All right, Alderman from the eighteenth, you had your hand up first. You have to unmute yourself.
First of all, let me first say, I didn't realize that two twelve was the vote, vote that I voted on earlier. But I do realize it now, and I think this is only a delaying tactic. We've already voted for it, and with us celebrating Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday, and with me, with me living out my faith as a Christian. Dr. Martin Luther, and we're talking about voting on something that is keeping the majority of the people in the workhouse who are poor, and, and most of, the overwhelming majority are poor black people. And then when we vote on things as leaders, we should carry it out. But when we put something, when we use fear, this is nothing but using fear of crime. And crime is nothing but a code word for black. And, and when we wonder, how did we get to Doc, to President Trump in the incident the other day, other week? When we continue talking about crime, and we continue scaring people with things that don't work, locking them up, keeping, spending most of our money. What we had done is spending most of our money, keeping people in jails who wouldn't, shouldn't even be there, and wouldn't even have to be there if they had the proper resources, and we are taking these. And we are taking these resources from forestry, from different departments. For example, forestry, they don't have enough workers to do the job. They don't have prop, they need equipment upgrades so that they can do a better job. They need full-time employees. In our ward, we, we have all of these, they cut the grass and other vegetation. And what happens is they don't pick it up and clean it up. And in many cases, they can't even get to certain thing, uh, vegetation because they don't have the proper equipment. So we need to make sure that those departments like forestry, um, and then like, uh, street department, we have potholes in our ward, but we've cut, uh, and, um, the parks department would love to do more activities, but we, um, we don't have it, uh, we, we are using that money that the voters voted for. For example, we are cutting our ward capital. The voters voted in two thousand for, uh, it's been, and we're talking about democracy. Here the voters voted for ward capital and we are not getting, and we are taking that same money and, uh, using it to balance the budget. The voters voted o- over and over again for three different recreational program proposition of, uh, P proposition, S pro, and, uh, there was another proposition, millions of dollars the voters have voted for, but for recreation. That money is being used for, to balance the budget. The workers, uh, and so, uh, when we talk, and when we use all this money for, uh, the administration of justice, uh, keeping the workhouse open, that money could be used the way that the taxpayer want to use. We continuously tax taxpayers about law, about police and other scare tactics, which don't work. We continue to, um, tax them. For example, we've given a raise, we just had a tax for them. We have, some districts have special business district taxes and the police. At one time, we didn't even have to have pay for refugees being picked up.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Alderman from the twenty-second, please state your point of order.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm not sure I'm following the Alderman from the eighteenth in, in, in this conversation and what he is saying, how it's germane to whether or not the voters have a right to vote on closing the workhouse.
It's cost a lot of money and I think that, what I think is that we need to let them know that if we, if we continue spending money on closing, uh, keeping the workhouse open, that other services are going to suck, that we're gonna have to cut back on other services. And I think that, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
We did not have both. We cannot continue spending money on, um, the workhouse.
All of them, for the eighteen, hold, hold on for a second, Alderman from eighteen, I have to get the statement in there. You have, make sure to keep your, um, your, the, your comments germane to the subject matter in front of us. And that's whether we, uh, send to the voters, um, this measure, uh, this non-binding measure to close the workhouse.
Thank you, Mr. President. No, I do, uh, let me say that the reason I don't think we should is because of the fact that, that, um, we don't, we may not have the resources to educate them to the consequences of keeping the workhouse open.
Okay.
And so they will not be informed, informed to the consequences. And we've already voted, uh, to close the workhouse and it should be, and we should, we should close it immediately and we should stand by our vote because we voted to close it. We are a democracy, we have already voted, so we should follow through on what we voted for.
Okay, thank you, Alderman, thank you. Alderman from the eleventh.
Uh, thank you, um, can I please inquire from the, of the Alderman from the twenty-second, please?
Alderman from twenty-second will yield a question to the Alderman from eleventh.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, I guess my question is, is why did we spend all this time over the summer, um, discussing multiple bills regarding closing the workhouse? It was voted on unanimously and now we're backtracking.
Well, Alderman, I don't think we're backtracking. This bill has nothing to do with whether or not, um, we can, it would be stop, the close the workhouse process. If that's the process that we're in, keep moving on that journey. This is a non-binding, um, vote. It's not like Prop D, it's not like, you know, other votes that we have that are binding where we don't have a choice, especially when it comes to the people. And so I think that this basically, you know, again, would validate if this is good policy at the end of the day. You know, I personally, I don't think it's a good policy, but that's me. And I don't think that.
If you didn't think it was a good policy, then why did you vote for it over the summer?
Because I wanted to be a team player, it sounds good, but cutting it off right now without going through all the mechanics and a good process of how we can actually take care of our citizens if they have to be incarcerated. From listening to the commissioner, there's concern about where would they go? Some of the detainees could end up in Oklahoma somewhere. What does that do to, for their family members that may want to go out and visit with them? I voted on a process, that's what I thought I was voting on. And I made it very clear, I am not for a hard stop. Now, I don't know why you voted for it, but I know how I voted for it. And I qualified my vote when I put my vote to that. I don't know what people are afraid of. At the end of the day, if this was a good process and the community has been educated on the value of closing the workhouse, then our constituents will say that on their vote.
I have heard from my constituents, the blanket emails that we get that say, you know, I'm your constituent. Um, I've heard from people I know verified that they are eleventh ward residents. And I have heard not one constituent in favor of this measure, but, um, every email I've received is in favor of closing the workhouse. So just me talking from hearing, you know, talking about what I've heard from residents in the eleventh ward, I've not had one reach out to me, um, in favor of keeping it open. So I just want to speak up for my residents.
Can I inquire of you, Alderman?
Sure.
Okay, so what would be the harm in asking the vote? Will it overturn anything if they vote against it?
Well, I, I think, you know, and I think I've been pretty consistent on, um, sending things to the ballot or overturning, um, things, uh, or ballot initiatives. You know, I see it on a state level all the time. You know, we complain when Jeff City, uh, overturns or passes the buck. I mean, at some point we are elected to make decisions. Otherwise, we could just put everything we vote for, um, on the ballot. And after we've now discussed this and labored over it, uh, we, we even went into additional sessions into our break um, over this in court as well. And, um, now we've decided, well, we're gonna just, I, I agree, um, with the Alderman from the eighteenth that this just seems like a delay tactic. Those, the commissioner, everyone's known, um, where this was headed and there just seems to be no real cohesive plan. I don't know if that's by design or what, but, um, this campaign has been vocal for a long time. I can understand their frustration and I just want to make sure that the emails that I've received, um, you know, that they're raised. And I'm also just, I, I guess I'm confused too on why we spent all that time working on this issue, unanimous support, and then now we're gonna send it to the voters, um, for their opinion. So, but I mean, maybe we need to take a poll from every single time. I mean, maybe every controversial vote that we take, we should just send it, you know, to the ballot initiative for an official poll, I don't know. Maybe that's where we're headed. It's certainly a good payday for consultants. But anyways, um, thank you very much for your inquiry.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, keep muting back. Mr. President, members of the Board, I rise in support of Board Bill two twelve Committee Substitute. And I do so, um, because my initial support for closing the workhouse did not come into our budget process. I was always a nuance supporter, um, because I probably had a much more experience with the workhouse over the long term of years than most people and from different aspects. Um, and so I did not want to blanketly close the workhouse without some other place because I was the Chair of Public Safety when we built the Justice Center, which was not built as a long-term facility. Also, I, as a public defender, I heard people when they would have to come in from other places, they would ask to go back to other places in outstate Missouri because they, we were interrupting their life as they knew it, as they waited to go to trial or whatever. And so, um, but I did know there were problems out at the workhouse for a long time. So I did not come on board until, uh, we were doing the budget. And I cannot in good conscience think we should spend eight million dollars a year when, um, we can't spend that in North St. Louis, the whole of North St. Louis. That, that is a problem with me, that we would spend this on prisoners, but not on the people who actually pay, uh, the taxes. And the people in my community asked questions about that because they started to hear, this is how much we're spending. So I was supportive and I made a, a, a statement during the budget that I thought that the mayor's budget was immoral. And I told, uh, the people to close the workhouse, you got me now. Then, um, so we were prepared and I even stayed up all night to do amendments to the budget about other things because our ward capital money was hijacked and I just think the last mayor's, uh, budget was immoral. Um, and what then happened is that we didn't get to vote on the budget. So let's go back and get the real history. We did not get to vote on the budget. We had, we would have, we had, I think we had to vote, we would have taken the money out to close the workhouse. So then what came along is another bill passed that the president sponsored. And I think a lot of people got on board and said, well, at least this is another way, a second chance to close the workhouse. But I was skeptical then also that it was not going to happen. Um, and I think if, uh, some of the people who are, uh, on this committee, I've had conversations with, I'm sorry, that's on this board, uh, they were skeptical too. So it had kind of got hijacked differently from, from what the original thing was in the first place. Uh, and I, uh, believe that there are nuances in a lot of things. Everybody wants to make it black and white. There are nuances, there are things that happen. Uh, we have to change things, um, because things happen. So when it didn't close on December thirty-first, I was not shocked. I didn't think it was going to either. I also voted for it because I had committed that I was going to be for it. I'm still for closing the workhouse, um, but I want to do it in a proper way. I have always said, even when I said I was for closing the workhouse, I've always said, I think we're gonna have, have to have another facility. I was a repurpose, uh, the workhouse purpose actually, uh, person. I actually called Congressman Clay when he was still in office, I called the Public Safety Director. I talked to a lot of people about why we couldn't repurpose, uh, the workhouse and that, and fix it up, close it down, move the people for a short period of time, fix a part of it up. Um, and, and don't, and let me say this, I am not for locking all the people up. I've been on record saying that we need to get the judges over here, they're not doing bond. A lot of those people in there, because the judges in the city of St. Louis are violating the law about how people should get bond. But I also know we have a lot of people locked up in outstate Missouri. And it's been my experience when I was a practicing attorney that people, uh, had, could not get to see their loved ones when they were outstate. So I started writing to Congressman Clay and, uh, calling the Public Safety Director and saying, why couldn't we repurpose this and use it for multiple purposes? Um, I think we get so focused on one purpose in the city and it's like schools and anything else. So my suggestion was, a lot of those people that we had in outstate, could we make a part of that where, uh, we brought those people in, especially when they're at the end of their sentences are near, because it's so hard on the families. It really is. If you have to go visit somebody, and I don't know if you've all ever gone to the jails across, uh, the state of Missouri, I've actually been to, uh, many of them. It is hard for the family to go and visit their, uh, their loved ones who are incarcerated. So for me, I thought we could have killed two birds with one stone. We could update the warehouse, uh, the workhouse, we could, uh, fix it up. We could have a part that would be for long-term prisoners that had been someplace else. Uh, we could fix up the other part because the problem that we're having with the workhouse, besides the fact that too many people are in there that haven't got bonds, is that there are things that have been a problem. Um, and so even when it's warm outside, it's often cold in the workhouse. And, uh, we got some laws about inhumane treatment of prisoners. And I've gone on record saying, back in two thousand and one, when I was the Chair of Public Safety, I actually started the thing of taking not just a group of the committee, I took the press through it and it was depressing. Now, I know they've made improvements since then, but we are in the middle of COVID right now. And so what we decided a few, uh, months ago or six months ago, eight months ago, just isn't working maybe this time. It's not working, uh, even for, we haven't been back in session almost a year now. The last time we actually had a session in person was in, I want to say, March of two thousand and twenty. And it's now January two thousand and twenty-one. So there are things that change. Uh, I, I resent it being out there, uh, having people collect signatures for me because I thought that was just asinine, we're collecting signatures and doing convoy. We're saying everybody stay safe, but now we have changed the whole process, uh, about one or two people. Um, so I didn't like that, but, but did have to do it to be able to file and did a very limited amount because Jeff could not believe we were out doing that. So we have to have some place to put people and we need to separate them, we can't pack them up. And so although it might be good in theory of what you're thinking, um, kind of like reducing from twenty-eight wards to fourteen wards, actual, when it actually happens, if you're not feeling the pain, um, then you don't care. That's what I'm hearing from a lot of people. I've heard it from reducing the wards and I hear it from, uh, closing the workhouse that, uh, somehow this is what we've done and this is what we've, we have to do. We didn't do it on December the thirty-first, it wasn't done. We should have come back in here if that really was the case and demanded immediately and had investigations. Why didn't this happen? We didn't. Oftentimes, I, you know, I don't agree with Alderman from the twenty-second ward, but what he is telling the truth about is there is nothing in this legislation that says you cannot continue with the product, process. It just says, we're gonna take a vote, we're gonna have a non-binding vote. So it's not even binding. That says I'm feeling the pulse of the people. Um, at the committee hearing, I got, uh, I got involved in this because I had a hearing, uh, about a board bill and I stayed to listen to this. And so, uh, it struck me when I felt non-binding. Now, I don't know how many of you all been here when we've done non bindings, but it means just that. It doesn't mean we have to do it, uh, it means that we're taking the pulse of the community. And, uh, what I also suggested is that we have some hearings, pro and con, about why we thought this was a good idea. In fact, I started writing up another resolution saying, let's have hearings, but should we do this? Let's, and let's not just hear one side of anything. Let's say this is why this is a good idea to, uh, close the workhouse, this is why it isn't. Now, some people say, well, we've talked about that enough. I really do not think that you guys, uh, understand that everybody is not, uh, engaged as you are. Everybody is not on Twitter, everybody is not on Facebook. I have a, a community that is very mixed. I have some people that are on Facebook and Twitter and so they are up to date and stuff. I have other people that don't have anything, don't have any kind of, uh, social presence on Facebook. They don't have any kind of presence and they have other things that they do. They go to work, they raise their children and they, and although you said, well, we've talked about it enough. I always tell people, that's not, that might be in your mind, but when you ask, people start asking questions or saying, I, I didn't know about this, then that isn't, that's not been enough to engage them. So for me, this does not in any way, in any way prohibit anything from continuing. It doesn't prohibit us from having a hearing to see why we didn't do, close on the thirty-first. It doesn't prohibit us from saying, we still want it closed, even though it didn't hit the thirty-first. It says, I'm going to take a test run up before the voters. And the real truth of the matter is, and I say this about resolutions a lot of times, although I'm gonna have to take back a little bit about that because I always say it's just like toilet paper. But our resolution about school did get some, uh, support and so I'm very happy for the fourth ward because Sumner and Hickey is getting saved. So I'm gonna have to say resolutions might have a little bit more power than I thought. But it really doesn't bind us to anything and it doesn't prevent us from doing anything. And I don't understand, um, why you wouldn't want to hear, um, the voters. I, I don't have a problem, I've taken more hard votes than mostly everybody here put together probably. I don't have a problem saying I'm still for it, but I also don't have a problem letting it go to the voters and to hear what their, uh, thoughts are. But I also don't have a problem letting it go to the voters and to hear what their thoughts are on this. And I would strongly urge that we do have some more hearings, even though you guys think everybody has heard everything. And I'm sorry that we can't have public hearings in person because we're really, when we have these hearings on Zoom, we're limiting all the people who do not have access to all this and to hear what they have to say. Probably in my community, I've not heard but for one person who was really pro-close the workhouse, actually. But sometimes I tend to be a lot more liberal than people in my community, and they allow me to do that because I do come back and explain my vote and why I think this is a good idea. And as I've said before, I still do not support spending eight million dollars a year on a facility. And I can't do that in any one of our wards. I would take that money in a heartbeat and divide it up amongst some development in North St. Louis. But that isn't happening. And I do have to acknowledge that we are under COVID right now and that we do need to do proper spacing. One of the complaints we had at the workhouse was that there was people that were maced, and they were in the COVID section. And that is awful if they're doing that. And that should be prevented. But if we're going to have to house people, and if we're talking about moving loved ones out to whoever, wherever we are, and I didn't hear that, but if we are actually saying that, then if they're the way we can keep people near the people who come to see them and remind them that they are going to come back out into a community that wants to see them successful, I want to do it. The other thing I want to remind people, people in the workhouse are not guilty, most of them. They have just been accused of something. And that is why I am on a thing about, I'm on a mission about, let's look at what our judges are doing. I have a personal encounter with one of my people who lives in one of my tenants who I had to go get out, who had his bond moved over. He got incarcerated in January and didn't get a bond hearing into April only because I raised hell as an attorney and as a member of the board. And then he did get out. I had to pay his bond, which was set way too high for him. And I paid it, which he gave me my money back. And now he's been cleared. But he was in jail February, March, three months without a bond hearing. But they were setting him to not have another one to June, and then they were going to move that back. So maybe we could clear up more of the workhouse if we start looking at the judges and start pushing back and saying, what are you doing? You are violating the law. And even Judge Edwards came to the hearing when I brought that up, said that is absolutely right. That's what we need to be doing, which is unusual for judges to even say that kind of thing. But that's what we need to be doing. We need to find ways we can get people out of the workhouse that shouldn't be there because most of them have just been accused of something. And it's very few of them, a small percentage that are there because they have been to trial or been found guilty of something. So I think we need to pursue this thing in two prongs. But I don't see anything wrong with, and I haven't seen anything that says we have to do what the voters say or we have to be bound by that. Now, I do understand that some people would say, well, this is just a delaying tactic. I don't see how it's delaying it because it's already been delayed. This is not delaying it in any kind of way, shape, or form. Is this a way that some people are going to take cover and change their vote? I don't know. Maybe they will. I'm not planning on changing my vote. My vote is still that I think the workhouse ought to be closed. But I still don't have anything that I can find and hear that says you cannot continue with the process. And I would encourage all the people who are feeling frustrated about why it didn't close on the 31st, that we start getting legislation, that we start doing resolutions, that we start getting more inquiry. But then we also have to be honest, if it really is honestly, we can't do it now because of COVID. It's nothing somebody made up. It's nothing we ever thought this time next year. This time last year, we would have never known we would be dealing with this. But if we honestly, safely cannot close it because we need more room, then we have to acknowledge that too. So I am willing to support this. And I want to just say, I got an email after what happened yesterday. I hate when people email me and then you're too cowardly to use your real email. If you email me, I email you back with facts, not with accusations, okay? And so this person said I was getting away from my progressive roots. First of all, I'm not a progressive. I'm a liberal. I'm a liberal Democrat. And the positions that I have, I had way before the progressives probably were born. Okay, so when you go back in the 80s, I had my own positions then. So do not label me. I am, I do not, when I came here, I never called myself an Alderman because I'm an Alderwoman. And so I made them change. So don't label me as a progressive. Nothing wrong with being a progressive. But I'm a liberal, black, female Democrat, and my positions were not shaped by the progressives. They were positions I already had before any of you all ever came to the Board of Aldermen. And if you go back and look in the newspaper, I was raising hell as a public defender about many of these things. So do not, do not try to paint me in a box and think I don't understand nuance because I do. I understand nuance, and mostly I vote with the progressives a lot, or they vote with me whichever way you want. But it's not because I'm following in behind, it's because these were already my positions, and they will remain my positions unless you can give me good factual information. And so if you show me in here that by passing this, that then we can't pursue with closing the workhouse, you got me. But if you don't, you do not have me. And I rise in support of two board bill, two 12 committee substitute, and I encourage others to also support it. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman from the 23rd.
Yes. So I do support this bill. And, you know, simply closing the workhouse, that doesn't mean that we're letting them out. We're going to put people in a way worse position. And what I voted on, in my understanding, was to have the Commissioner bring a detailed plan to close the workhouse. And it had a date to try to close the workhouse by the end of the year. His detailed plan was to overcrowd, put people on what they called boats in the Justice Center, and send other people as much as three hours away. I wouldn't support that under any circumstances. I don't hate the people that are in the workhouse that bad. Why do I want to take somebody that's already in a bad situation and make it worse? Now, if he would have came back and said, oh yeah, we can do that. We got plenty of room. Don't worry about it. I would have been fine with that, you know? What do we do with all the employees? Well, you know, we're going to move them over there too. Or someone suggested they could become tree trimmers. I think that was Alderman Todd. I don't think that's quite reasonable to say, gee, we can move them somewhere else. And I will say that I have always said I'm fine with a vote of the people. When it was the airport, when it was everybody's best interest to want to put that on the ballot, I, Alderwoman and Gracias did a board bill. I was actually a co-sponsor of it to put it on the airport for the voters. I understand we can't give our vote away, so every time we do that, it's always non-binding. Then it became an issue on the airport, although it will pertain to the same thing. Then it became an issue that, gee, we don't want to put it on the ballot now because it wasn't in anybody's best interest again. I always support putting things on a ballot. And even if the vote would come back, either way, then I would have to make my vote the best way I see fit. Again, I talked to the people in the workhouse. I begged that other people go to the workhouse. I asked the sponsor of the close the workhouse to just go over there, and he never did. If you talk to the people in the workhouse, the one thing they will tell you is, why do you want to punish us? Why do you dislike us that bad? Because this isn't about making no cash bonds. This isn't about lowering or talking to the judges to let lower offense people out. This is about taking people that are in a bad situation, in a bad place, and sending them to a worse place. And I think if you educate the neighbors and neighborhood on this, they would understand it's a bad move. I felt that way. You know, I support Larry Rice's shelter downtown, and a lot of people don't. I think they said, okay, but the place is terrible, and it's horrible, and you got to close it. And they did. So now you got people living and dying on the street. That's a much better situation. Oh, wait a minute, maybe not. Maybe if you're not a homeless person with nowhere to go. Again, my thing is simple. He came back with a plan. That's what I voted for. His plan harms peoples. So if you hate the people in the workhouse that much, would you want to move them somewhere else? This is not about letting anybody out of jail. I don't care if they're innocent or not innocent. They're in a bad situation there. But why do you hate them so much that you would want to move them into a much worse situation? Again, this is not about saving money. Is it worth a million dollars in savings to send someone over to the Justice Center in an overcrowded position, place? Is it worth a million dollars to send people three hours away from home? Because if it is, then I feel bad for anyone to think that way. I actually am advocating for the people that are in the workhouse. I talked to the people in the workhouse. I'm advocating for them. Please, don't put us in a worse place, no matter how bad you think this place could be. It can't be any worse than putting us in the Justice Center overcrowded. It can't be any worse separating us from our families three hours away. If you hate the people that much, let's close that place today. Let's put them in a worse place. I could never support that. I don't support letting homeless people out on the street saying that Larry Rice's place is so horrible that we're going to put them out on a street where they are dying and being sick. If you hate them that much, let's close the place. I will never support that until we can come up with a reasonable plan that doesn't hurt people. But again, if you want to hurt people, let's close it. I won't support it. Thank you.
Alderman from the 21st.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of this board bill. Because all we're doing is giving our citizens, the people who elected us, the ability to vote and have a say in if we want the workhouse closed or open. Down at the Board of Aldermen, we speak about democracy. We speak about people having the right to voice their opinions and their concerns every Friday in everyday committee hearings. And as soon as we put forth a board bill that's non-binding, it's not closing it, it's not keeping it open, but it's simply asking the residents of this city, what do they want? And we have an issue with it. This board bill is not preventing the workhouse from being closed. If the close the workhouse campaign still want to go out and rally people in support of their agenda, they can do that. If opponents want to make sure that they rally people against it, they can do it. I don't see the big issue. And we keep talking about Board Bill 92. But obviously, my colleagues are not reading the language in Board Bill 92. Board Bill 92 says, the city of St. Louis will direct a plan to close the workhouse and present it to the Board of Aldermen. That's what it says. It didn't say that we would close the workhouse by December of last year. It says that we will develop a plan to close the workhouse by December of last year. My colleagues are misinterpreting legislative language. And I have an issue with that because they are using that to say we're going against the people of the city of St. Louis, when we are asking the people, what do they want? And now it's an issue. Mr. President, in the last three major board bills that I can think of, be it war reductions, be it the residency rule for city workers, and be it the airport bill, everybody is saying, let's close the workhouse today. Yesterday was all saying, let's have a public vote. But now when we do a public vote, it's an issue and it's a problem. And I just don't understand. And yesterday, my colleague from the 8th Ward said that this is a black movement. This is ran by blacks. And I took a little issue with that because I find it perplexing, and I find it gut-wrenching for a white colleague from South St. Louis to say, I have a black organization that's running a black issue. Listen to the black organization. I have an issue with that. You know, Mr. President, a quote that I remember from Clammy Tour Ray says that white people will always use black people to go against other black people. And that's what I felt yesterday in that committee hearing. That's why I got off the call because I was too emotional to even speak. And I knew I would have said something that I regretted. But, Mr. President, this board bill is simply asking the people to vote. I support it. It is a very delicate and touchy situation and issue. Some people want it closed. Some people want it open. I want to know where my residents stand on the issue, and this is their opportunity to do so. I support this board bill. I would encourage all of my colleagues in this chamber who were elected by their residents to support this board bill. And if they don't, Mr. President, that's very telling. I yield back.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman from the 19th. Okay, Alderman. Oh, there you are.
Oh, thank you, sir. I just have a few comments because most has been said that needs to be said. I just want to reiterate that the plan has been presented. It had some nuances that still needed to be worked out. The plan will continue to be worked on in efforts to close the workhouse. No one has ever indicated to stop working on the plan. We have some emergency situations that have come up in the last 30 days that has required MSI to have more inmates. And as I shared with the committee yesterday, I had called and asked the superintendent over there how many people were there because it was being told on the streets that there were only about 10 people there. Well, there are 109 currently there, and that number will increase because of the overcrowding at City Justice Center and because of COVID. We may even have to open up the portion of it that has been closed for about four years. We don't know that yet, but that's where we are. And there's nothing we can do about that because it's about safety and the fact that you cannot go against the justice that has been being put in front of us. You see, when a judge, well, let's start with the prosecuting attorney. When you are charged with a crime, you're supposed to have certain hearings. If those don't take place timely, that person stays incarcerated if they don't have the ability to bond themselves out. And as our Alderperson, Alderwoman from the 1st Ward stated, sometimes just getting that bond hearing takes forever. We have people sitting in the Justice Center, and it wasn't built for that, incarcerating people 23 hours out of the day. They've been there for three years waiting for a trial. That is not anything that we have control of. And so the other entities in this complex system, we need to be working with them and getting their attention to make some changes. If we do move prisoners, and I'm sure at some point they will find accommodations for some, I doubt for all because all communities have an uptick in crime and are suffering with the same problems with COVID and everything else. So it's not likely. I'll just share that. But we can listen and get a pulse of the residents without stopping the movement that is currently in place, that is being worked on every day. I also called Mr. Glass to find out about, he is still searching. I also call uh Mr. Glass to find out about, he is still searching uh for spaces, and they may end up in Oklahoma somewhere, maybe, if there's space there. But they're working on the plan. They're still moving forward. No one has stopped. And I think that we are really um at a place where we just really cannot understand that there are things that have taken place that we cannot ignore. And then the last thing I shall share is that we honestly don't have the power to close the workhouse anyway without going through some other uh regulatory steps. Uh, just like when we built the Justice Center, uh, you have to get certain approvals. Your uh plan has to be reviewed. So there are some other steps that would have to take place. Uh, we don't have that power. And I'm sure that at some point, if we would listen and ask some more questions, Mr. Glass and Judge Edwards can explain process and procedure to us when we get to that point of closing. But right now, we have to deal with what we have, and I'm going to support this bill. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from the ninth. Alderman from the ninth. One more time, Alderman from the ninth. Okay, Alderwoman from the
Thank you, Mr. President.
There you go.
Having trouble getting my video going there. So. Um, yeah, thank you for uh giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, for anyone that was a part of yesterday's public safety hearing, uh, everyone realizes that this is a very emotional and uh a very um, you know, concerning thing for many of us um that uh the Close the Workhouse Group, um, the organization that uh that has been uh out in the streets uh for three years uh has presented many plans. Uh, we originally, uh, you know, we had a resolution that originally came to the floor uh that I believe went through three uh public safety hearings um that uh ended up that we got kind of put on hold uh as the beginning of COVID um kicked in in uh March. Um, I stated at the Public Safety Committee hearing yesterday that uh it was kind of ironic that it was uh January fourteenth uh twenty twenty, exactly one year to the date um that we had a press conference on the steps of the rotunda of City Hall for the Close the Workhouse Organization to unveil their plans as to how we can be using the money that we are currently uh incarcerating people for um to be put into uh other areas of our city. Um. We, you know, we had uh a lot of discussion, um, you know, when we, when we unanimously passed uh in the Board of Aldermen um a bill, and it was signed by the mayor uh that we would uh create the plan for how we would close uh the the workhouse down. Um, and I can't agree with the alderwoman from the first more that uh this time, uh, you know, instead of debating whether we should go back to uh maybe ask one more opinion of the people, why aren't we having hearings about uh why um the requests and the studies and the uh concerns that we have were not put in place? Um, I have to agree with uh the Alderman from the eighteenth that I believe that this is just one more uh opportunity for people to kind of kick the can down the road. Um, we have a plan. We we presented plans. Uh, we have discussions. We've had three years of discussions. Um, you know, there's, there's been talk about, well, this gives the opportunity for more people to be informed about it. Um, with the exception of the airport, I can't think of any topic that has had more discussion over the past three years. Um, the organizers of the Close the Workhouse Group have knocked on thousands of doors all through the city, every ward. Uh, they've sent out thousands of postcards, made thousands of phone calls, uh, had rallies, many rallies. Uh, they have power hours every week where they call constituents, they call people, they get the pulse. The pulse has been that the City of St. Louis residents feel that uh the the workhouse needs to be closed. So for us to to be here now debating again, well, let's maybe put it on the ballot one more time. A non-binding resolution. So even if it passes uh with major approval, it still isn't going to mean anything to us. Even if it fails, uh, it still isn't going to mean anything to us. So the work that need to be done to hold uh ourselves accountable and our city accountable for why this hasn't closed, we're not doing. We're gonna go ahead and go back to knocking on doors, telling people why they should vote in April on something that has had plenty of outreach and has has had more organization than a lot of topics I've seen. So again, I'm, yesterday, uh, got a little more worked up. Today, I'm gonna kind of keep it quiet. Um, I believe that the organizers of Close the Workhouse, Action St. Louis, Bail Project, I believe that these organizations are fully willing to accept this challenge. If you think that this is what is right, to put it on the ballot one more time, they're fully willing. They're fully willing to bring this as a topic for fourteen of us that are up and a mayor's race that are up. They they're happy to put us all on the spot. And you know what? I'm gonna stand with them, just like I did three years ago, just like we've done for the last three years of trying to say, this is what is right. This is what we need to do. And so, you know, if if we want to go ahead and put it up for a vote, a non-binding vote, okay. Um, especially when we're getting ready, you know, we're we're saving a little bit of energy here for debating uh whether or not Board Bill seventy-seven is amended, whether we should re redo the vote that was already taken with the people. Um, especially when we have uh on a day where, you know, I I can't thank the Alderman from the sixteenth enough uh for putting Board Bill two hundred on informal because I couldn't imagine how we'd be uh how this meeting would go if we had that one going here too. Um, but that sure seems like something that maybe should go to the vote of the people. Uh, if we're gonna be asking whether or not the City of St. Louis is okay with persistent surveillance, maybe we should put that on the vote of the people. So this back and forth of, well, do we trust the people? Do we not trust the people? Is is where I'm just saying, I I don't support um putting this back on the ballot. Um, but I have a feeling it's gonna pass, and I think we're we're gonna accept the challenge of informing our neighbors as to why we believe this is the right thing to do. So I thank you for your time, and I will uh yield.
All right, uh, Alderman from six.
Thank you, Mr. President. I I just wanted to echo some of what the Alderman from the eighth just said. I
The ninth.
The ninth. Thank you. Um, the organizers for the Close the Workhouse Campaign have undertaken some of the most robust and comprehensive um outreach. They were critical in helping us pass Medicaid expansion um and no on Amendment Three. And so I I just wanted to pause to make sure that um they realize that we do value their work down here, and um they have brought us many opinions from across the city, including um a predominantly um in favor portion of the sixth ward for Close the Workhouse. Um, I also just wanted to correct something. The Alderman from the twenty-third made mention of something I I sponsored on on the airport. I'm not sure to whom he was referring, but I've never sponsored anything on Close the Work uh on the airport. And then, um, lastly, uh, just for the record, my last name ends in an A and not an S. It's pronounced Ingracia, not Ingracias. And my first name is Christine and not Christine. Thank you.
Uh, Alderman from the fourteenth. Alderman from the fourteenth.
I I took my hand down. I think everything's been said. Thank you very much.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, members of the board. Uh, last year on July seventeenth, uh, I I I spoke to you all about how uh Close the Workhouse as a as a movement proved that this system worked, that a ground swell of people could come up and and successfully rally their elected officials to change something that just a a few years before would have been seen as impossible. And uh today, it seems we're back here to to prove to folks that it doesn't work. That in the City of St. Louis, it doesn't work. This is bigger than Close the Workhouse. Uh, this is about whether what we do here in this body matters or not. This was a bill unanimously passed by this body that was signed into law by the mayor. I agree with the alderwoman from the first that we should be asking some pretty tough questions about why the ordinance that we unanimously passed and was signed into law by the mayor doesn't seem to have been uh followed to a T. Um, it's, it's seems to me that this is another delay tactic. Um, it's, it's a travesty that we would rewind the progress here to ask for a non-binding vote. As as my colleague from the ninth pointed out, this vote, it it doesn't really uh uh matter, I guess, to us what the what the public uh says when they weigh in. Uh, because people have made it clear that this prog- the the progress will continue to go. So so why uh why ask everyone uh in the city to to spend their time researching this and forming an opinion on it uh when it's not even a binding vote? Uh, it it, we we've had years of debate on this topic, many, many public hearings. I I I struggle to think of something uh that we've spoken about and discussed more, both in this body and uh in in various neighborhood meetings and rooms and organizing meetings and all that throughout the City of St. Louis. Uh, in in fact, the the chairman of public safety at the last meeting did not allow public testimony on this because he said it would be so one-sided. Um, for those supporting a public vote, I hope that you will uh support a public vote on other terribly controversial things that this city does then that are much more controversial. For example, uh, on whether or not we should be deciding to forfeit our uh constituents' civil rights and civil liberties by spying on them with planes eighteen hours a day. I I hope that you would all join in a public vote on that. We can take the pulse of the city and see if how they feel about that. Ultimately, like I said, either what we do here matters or it doesn't. Uh, and a yes vote on this, to me, it just says that we sit here and pretend to legislate and that we don't have teeth, we don't have claws. Uh, so I will be a no on this. Thank you.
Alderman from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, a lot of the points that I was going to raise have already been said, and so I will keep this uh brief. Um, you know, while I do agree with the alderwoman from the first that this does not necessitate that we must delay in closing down the workhouse. Um, I do agree um with the alderman from the eighteenth ward that this will delay the closure of the workhouse. Um, we all know how how business works down here. And if given the opportunity to pass the buck, we pass the buck. Um, I think it can be, we can rest assure that this is not going to, um, that we're not going to see movement on actual closure of the workhouse between now and an April vote. Um, and I think that's sad. I think it's really sad that the people in the workhouse are being used as a political pawn right now um to create a certain narrative that is um that we are going to see throughout this election season. Um, that will be based upon fear and not about restitution, not about rehabilitation, um, and not about a different public safety system that could actually uh decrease crime while uh taking people out of our criminal justice system. And I think that that is unfortunate. What I will also say, though, is the very first Close the Workhouse public meeting that I ever attended was April eighteenth of twenty eighteen. It was a pretty large gathering. I would say maybe two hundred people showed up um to kick off the campaign and talk about how we could forward this through. And over the years, um, Close the Workhouse has participated, has come in front of this body at least a dozen times. They have showed up at our ward meetings. They have made phone calls. They have made, um, they have knocked on doors. Um, they have been, have a, had a very large presence in our media. Um, they have made this issue a forefront uh in our city for at least the last two years. Um. I think we are passing the buck on this. Um, but what what I will also say is if we, it, I am confident in the organizational capacity of Close the Workhouse because they have been putting in the work and the energy and the real grassroots um movement for the last almost three years. And so I would say challenge accepted. You know, if we want to put this on the ballot, put it on the ballot. I am confident that a city that just elected Cori Bush, our next Congresswoman, is also going to overwhelmingly vote to close the workhouse. And I am, I am happy to be on the same ballot as this initiative. I think that is, it is going to drive voter turnout, and it's going to drive people in our city who want to make sure that we actually have a city government that is focused on not doubling down on the same arrest and incarcerate model of public safety that has dominated the discourse at this board and has dominated the viewpoint of city government for the last thirty, forty years. I know that people in this city are ready for change, and I know that Close the Workhouse has been a very inch integral part of pushing for that change. So I will put their organizational capacity, their organizing ability up against any fear-mongering campaign, up against any campaign to try to keep the workhouse open. Because at the end of the day, Close the Workhouse speaks for a lot of folks that have been negatively impacted by this jail in our community and people who who have loved ones or or friends or who have been negatively impacted by the workhouse. Um, and and the these negative repercussions, they run very deep in our community. And so when asked, when given the choice to keep this jail open that has harmed so many people in our communities and keep it open, I am confident that our community will say to shut it down. And what I hope happens at that point in time is that this body actually takes its uh responsibility to heart. I hope that we do have hearings that are uh that are are investigating why we have not closed this down. There are two bills that have been at the Board of Aldermen that would actually defund the workhouse, that would get us there. Um, it, one of those was met with with opposition to even introduce that bill. Uh, so efforts have been made to meet that deadline by um by the end of the year. And and folks on this body and folks in the community have continued to push for this. Um, and so in close, I will just say that, you know, I will stand with Close the Workhouse Campaign and all the activists and organizers that have been pushing for this for three years um on an April vote. I am happy to be on the same ballot as them, and um and I am happy about what this is going to do to drive up voter turnout for progressive voters in this city.
All right. Alderman from the twenty, Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yes, uh, will the Alderman from the ninth uh pose for a question?
Alderman from the ninth will yield a question to Alderman from twenty-third.
You know, I guess I will.
Alderman from twenty-third, please proceed.
I simply ask you, didn't you, and you can, I'm sure I have it in my email, did you ask me not to take a vote on Close the Workhouse? It's a simple yes or no. You, you actually emailed me asking me not to take a vote on Close the Workhouse. Is that factual? I know you're using the COVID as an excuse. Did you ask me not to take a vote on the workhouse?
Um, Alderman, I, we've gone over this before. I asked you to wait till we had an evening public meeting.
We had one.
That was the request.
No, we had, we had an evening public meeting. But that evening public meeting
That was, that was the request.
Take a vote.
No, the request, you can look at your emails, Alderman. The request was not to vote until we had a chance to have an evening meeting where people from the public that worked during the day, that cannot attend our daytime meetings, had an opportunity to speak. That was the request, and that was you obliged to. So that's, we've gone over this before, and you're welcome to look at your emails, but that was the request.
I will, I will put, I will put the email out on, I will put the email out on a public
I appreciate that.
Because we had an evening meeting at your
I don't think this is pertinent anymore.
At your request, no, at your request, we didn't take a vote. So don't try to lay that off on me. It was at your request that we did not take a vote.
You're, you're correct, Alderman, that we did not, I did not want to vote until we had an opportunity to have a nighttime meeting. You are correct on that.
We had a nighttime meeting, and it was during that nighttime meeting and that I was asked not to take a vote. I know, I can, I can pull this up. The other thing, I wanna, I wanna
I don't think this is pertinent to uh this uh current one, but go for it.
Okay, and I will. That's, I just want the facts out. The other fact to Alderman Narayan. We had public comment on this three different times. The same group came. Do you think that the that the conversation would have been any different than this time? Also, we, we've already gone through, we had public comment multiple times on this. I, you know, so to say, gee, I didn't take public comment, I did that on three different occasions, in person. I, you know, so to say, gee, I didn't take public comment, I did that on three different occasions, in person, on on uh this uh Zoom forum. So don't, don't try to say that I didn't take public testimony. I took it over and over and over into the identical same group. And they were said, well, you know, then you should have got some of your own group on there. Well, I'm just saying, I took public testimony, and I I actually resent that you say that I'm being unfair to anybody. That is an absolute bunch of garbage. And again, to say that I didn't take pu- public testimony when I did it three times, what are we gonna do, five, six, seven, eight, nine times? This is a simple thing. Put it on a ballot. I'm sorry that uh you don't believe it, but I also am answering to being called out for not taking a public vote when we had already did that three times. And there was always the exact same people with always the exact same statements. I didn't have see why we would have to do that on this bill when we were having other bills that I was actually asked to take public testimony on. Did you call me and ask me to take public testimony? No. Did any of the aldermen call me and say, will you take public testimony? No. So don't call me out. Uh and I have no other statements. I, you know, other than, I guess, we'll go back to my original, why punish the people? We can, they are, people asked to be moved over to that workhouse because of COVID. You're punishing the people. You're not letting anyone out. If you want to talk about true reform, if you want to get what uh some of the judges, the head judge over in front of public safety, I'm happy to do that. If if you want to start talking about on low-end criminal activity, no cash, I'm I'm open to all that. But to simply punish the people is not the answer. And I'm uh show me, if you can show me where you sent me something, but nobody sent me anything. Plus, as the chairman of the committee, I chose not to have another thirty people say the same thing over and over and over and over again.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Alderman. Uh Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, uh Mr. President. I just want to say this. First, I want to commend the alderman from the twenty-third ward, who chairs the Public Safety Committee. And his predecessor, Alderman from the eighteen, the former alderman from the eighteenth ward, the Honorable Terry Kennedy, uh who also chaired the Public Safety Committee since I've been an alderman. And since then, we have had more than ten public hearings that allows for public testimony on close the workhouse. More than any other piece of legislation that I can think of uh since I've been alderman. But I want to correct something because I keep hearing this and and I'm a little offended. Um closing the workhouse, closing a building is not criminal justice reform. Black people will still be locked up, incarcerated unjustly. Black people will still be mistreated by police. Not closing a building is not going to change anything for the sad reality that black people go through here in the city of St. Louis. If you want to do real criminal justice reform, that starts with bail reform, that starts with reforming of courts, including municipal courts and criminal courts and civil courts, and actually starts with real police reform. And I thank you, Mr. President, for passing a series of police reforms that we passed early on this session in terms of uh the ban on no-knock warrants, making sure that officers report uh incidents when a gun is drawn at a civilian. This is real criminal justice reform, not closing a building. My colleagues in South St. Louis, my white colleagues in South St. Louis are using this issue in a simply window dressing. This is not doing anything for African Americans who are discriminated against every day, and you do not get to choose. You do not get to choose, and you do not have the right to choose, an issue for us and say that this will save us. You are not our savior. And you do not get to legislate for our communities. You do not get to choose that that this issue will save our communities or save our neighborhoods or our wards respectfully. You don't get to do that because you don't live the life that we live. You do not walk in our neighborhoods. I have not seen any of my white colleagues walk down Penn Roads. I have not seen any of my white colleagues and Jeff Vanderloo on Carr Square. Until I see that, until you have real conversations with real people who've actually been in the workhouse and in a justice center. I'm one of them, and I thank Alderman from the first for getting me out. But you do not get to choose our issues, and you do not get to choose our solutions. Work with us, listen to us, and listen to our residents. This board bill will allow our residents and yours the opportunity to voice their concerns. I don't see what the issue is, but I definitely want to correct that to the alderman from the fifteenth ward. Closing the workhouse is not criminal justice reform. If you want to work on criminal justice reform, then let's do that. But don't use this issue, this weak issue, and try to dress it up as something that it's not. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield back.
Thank you, Alderman. All the woman from the twentieth. All the woman from the twentieth.
Mr. President, I had, uh I don't have my hand raised, uh but I'm happy to speak on this issue.
It was, it was up a second ago. Uh you must have took it down.
Uh I I just like to state the obvious here, and that is that we've already considered closing the workhouse in a board bill this session. A bill that was signed into law earlier this year, ordinance seven-one-two-one-seven. And it tells the public uh that this body recommended by the Board of Estimate and Portionment is amending the duties and directing the Commissioner of the Correct- of Corrections to begin the process of closing MSI, also known as the workhouse, and directing the Budget Director to analyze the net cost savings to the general fund if MSI is no longer operated as a detainee facility, and it contains an emergency clause. I'm discouraged that this body, under the current leadership of President Reed, failed to put before the public privatizing our airport, hasn't considered putting before the public other proposals we've mentioned here, uh tells the public through an ordinance that we're closing the workhouse. It doesn't close the workhouse, and then wants to punt it to the public. It's my question really would be, you know, if we pass this and say for some chance the public doesn't support it, I don't think that's going to happen. I've talked to so many members of the public. I think they overwhelmingly want to support closing the workhouse. What would we do? Would we undo ordinance seven-one-two-one-seven? Um I I I'm just a bit confused about the process here. And uh, you know, recognizing that we have already considered closing the workhouse already in this session. It is discouraging to then go back just a few months later uh and consider the matter in a different way. Uh and I think it is really disingenuous to our public uh with whom uh we, you know, had a discussion, a public discussion uh with consideration of uh board bill number ninety-two earlier this session. Um and uh I I did have my hand uh taken down, um but I am happy to log this concern that I have uh with the general public and with my colleagues here. I know many of us are beleaguered. Um, you know, we are serving in a part-time body of legislators. Many of us are trying to figure out solutions. Takes leadership at the top really to get things done, and I'm dismayed that despite passing the ordinance that we uh passed earlier this year, uh that we didn't, in fact, get closing the workhouse done.
Thank you. Alderman from the eighteenth.
Uh thank you, Mr. President. Um again, I want to reiterate that um uh we uh have already voted on it, so I'm not going to be repetitive, but the workhouse in particular, uh it was built in sixty-six. It has leaky roofs, mold, infestation, venom. Uh and the mass majority of people have never been convicted. But the other, and they stay in there more than three hundred days, so we do need, and also it's predominantly African Americans. Almost ninety percent of these people are African Americans, and the average African American stays in the workhouse one hundred days longer than the white, their white counterparts. This building has destroyed thousands of lives. It cut children off from their parents, cut young men and women off from their jobs and the promise of a better life, all without bail. The jail, a a pillar of the local prison industrial complex, is as much a monument to white supremacy as the con- any Confederate statue and a relic of failed arrest and incarceration model of public safety. Now, I'm staying with the topic of of, we also need to, the public doesn't have the information we have. For example, there are books that tells us, it's called Locking Up Our Own by James Foreman Jr. Uh uh Pipe, but big Pipe Dream Blues. This book is by uh Clarence uh Lu- Lu- Lucene and uh and 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 Dr. King, you're saying King remembered. Dr. King, we are celebrating his birthday, birthday this this week, this week. And Dr. King was working with garbage, because he went to jail, he was working with garbage, the Poor People's Campaign, he wanted jobs for people. That's why he got killed. Dr. King believed in drug treatment on demand. Dr. King, so Dr. King, we can celebrate Dr. King's birthday by finding all alternative treatment. I would say one of the police chiefs, I won't say which one because he's not there to defend himself, in St. Louis, said that the number, that the majori- that almost half of the cases are drug-related when we talk about uh jail. We uh, so if we treat, we're the only country according to some articles I read that locked people up and criminalized them, lized them for using drugs. So we need, the TID plan calls for drug treatment on demand. So and jobs for all, that's what Doc, we can, that's what Dr. King said, and that would uh reduce our crime. Since we can't, so anyone in mass incarceration right now got black people, those who talk about black people, got black people, it was crack cocaine, which is a hundred to one, got some blacks in jail right now. But at the same time, the fe- federal government, our federal government give out federal aid to the main countries that provide crack cocaine, which is Bolivia, one hundred twenty-two million, Colombia, five hundred fifty-eight million, and Peru, a hundred and thirty-eight million, thirty-three million dollars. So the point I'm making, Mr. Pres- uh to the audience is that what we got to do, we had to close the workhouse as a step, it it that's a step in the right direction, and and I'm gonna end by saying we've already voted on it for it. And when we vote, we should uh uh close the workhouse and save some lives and find alternative ways in the future of even punishing people because the majority are there because they are black and poor. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to uh reiterate that closing this building is not justice reform. The uh the inmates that are in MSI currently will continue to be housed according to where they are in their uh case actions. So they will be placed in another facility. Uh it will, it it won't be in St. Louis. It probably won't be in the state of Missouri, but they will be incarcerated. So closing that building is not going to stop that. That's not justice reform. The reform part of it comes from the very beginning of their interaction with the justice system so that they have fair treatment. So they get their hearings timely, and they're not sitting there waiting for bond review for three to six months and making sure that they're not waiting for a trial for two to three years. That's justice reform. And also not being charged unnecessarily so, which I give my credit to our current circuit attorney because she has put a lot of things as far as justice reform in place. And so some of that is already happening, but we still have a long way to go. So don't play that game about this is just a reform because it's not. And I shall say it again. The plan was presented before December thirty-first. The plan to close the building is very fluid. It is being worked on every day. And if not for them transferring all those prisoners from the City Justice Center back out to uh MSI because they didn't have room, plus they had to move some of the ones who were incarcerated at the Justice Center because of COVID, because they didn't have enough space to uh have safety uh in distancing. All of that has to be dealt with. You cannot ignore it because there are regu- regulatory things that must be followed that will make us do the right thing. So you don't get to make those kind of decisions. You don't get to do that. And the people who are in charge are trained and certified to follow the regulatory things that must be followed. But the plan is fluid, and they are continuing to work towards that goal. Nobody has said, stop it. Nobody. And this issue, we're spending too much time on it. And at the end of the day, there's going to be an election process in April anyway, and it's not hurting anything just to get the pulse. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh Alder, Alder woman from twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only, only question that I have is, and as me being, I still, people laugh, I still look at myself as a a junior alderperson. But the only question that I have is to the people that are pushing this, how long have you been sitting on the board? Because I'm hearing from Sees and Alder people, and they're telling us that isn't, nobody said the workhouse wouldn't be closed. It was just real clear that it's a plan that has to be followed per guidelines of the federal government, the state government. And so we can't just go turn the lock and say that's it, that's the end of it, and we gotta close it, one. Two, Alderman John Muhammad said you're focusing on a building. But Alder woman Sharon Tyers said you need to be looking at justice reform with the bail bond piece. And I told that to OSH defenders when they approached me. I said, well, what's your plan? If you feel the bond piece is the problem, why are we focusing on that? When I talked to the Public Safety Director, he said it was a problem. But you all are so in tune to this building, you're not even looking at, we still got people locked up for over a year waiting on a darn trial. Who does that? And that's what you should be looking at to get the people out of there. Alderman Tyers, she told you this, it took almost a year for her to get a person out because of the bail bond piece. So I'm not understanding. We never said we we're not gonna close the workhouse. We put a plan together, we gonna close the workhouse, but we do know enough, whether you believe it or not. We have enough knowledge to know, and we have a lot of lawyers that sits on this board. It's legal processes you have to go through because we can't take any more hits legally with lawsuits. And so that's my question. You got senior people at the table that gave their opinion, and I respect them, and I understand what they're saying. And so all I'm hearing from the people of close the workhouse is forget what you're talking about, this what we want, and you should have did it December thirty-first. Well, I'm sorry, you don't get your way all the time. It's not how things go, and we have processes we have to follow, and I respect them. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alder woman. Alderman from the third. Alderman from the third.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um I appreciate all the hard work that has went into trying to do something about the injustices that have plagued the city of St. Louis for a very long time. There's a lot of different groups that are working towards trying to do what some would consider justice reform, others would consider jail reform. consider justice reform, others would consider jail reform, and there are very, very big differences in those, those terminologies. And when we are working towards doing particular things that affect, um, our criminal justice system as a whole in the city, we definitely need to be aware of exactly what direction we're going in and how to use those terminologies, so we can ensure that whatever we're working towards, um, whatever that next step may be, is it something we've already crossed over while mixing these terminologies? Um, if that all makes sense. Um, I appreciate Kayla Reid, I appreciate the initiative that everybody, once again, it takes a lot of effort, and it takes a lot of time for these groups to go through, knock on doors, get the sentiment of whichever people, uh, that they've spoken to at this particular point, and get support and gain support in the city like ours on doing anything dealing with justice reform. Our city is, is built on an archaic system, and that, that system definitely needs to be changed, and there's still a lot of old players running around in it, keeping things the same way that it has been for a very long time. As things change, we will make significant changes. I think this is a significant change for the city of St. Louis in the midst of a significant change that's going on, on the entire planet. Um, we can talk about Corona and continue to say that things, uh, can't be blamed on it, but we have to address the changes that have happened within our city since it has, uh, come upon us. We've had the highest murder rate, uh, in 50 years. Uh, the, so, since it was built in 1966, um, once, once again, in 50 years, we've had the highest rate of homicide within our city. And, you know, that, that in itself, uh, being that large of a, of a, of a number, uh, of us, of us having not this large amount of homicides, I think we need to relook at what it is that we're doing. Uh, when we initially started talking about this, those numbers did not exist, we weren't talking about, and of course, we were having conversations about how bad the city was in terms of violence, um, but we didn't have as much, uh, going on as we do right now. I think, um, the city itself is in great need of, of a plan and a direction. If that plan is closed down, the workhouse, there needs to be a full plan on how to fill it back up at the same time, because we got a lot of murderers out on the loose, um, throughout the entire city of St. Louis. We have a lot of people who need to go to jail. Everybody don't need to be there. I, I hate to see my people locked up, but there are a lot of our people that you can ask today who are in jail that would tell you, if I was not here, I will be dead. Jail saved my life, I was out here tripping, I was doing X, Y, Z, and that's not everybody. You talk to a whole lot of people in jail right now, uh, that I've been to the workhouse and else, they'll tell you they had good experiences, some will say they have bad experiences, others will say that they would rather be here within the city than have to get bussed to somewhere else. With all the things that are going on within the city of St. Louis, if we end up hitting capacity at one of these jails and end up having to put a lot more violent offenders because we're having a lot more violent offenses happening within our city, we're going to need an immediate place to put people and separate them. Now, I'm not saying we need to keep the workhouse open for a prediction of us having a, an influx of black people we need to lock up. I'm saying right now, with the particular numbers that we have in this city right now, today, and all the shootings that we have, there is a lot of things we need to be thinking about. We're talking about justice reform, or at least addressing poverty, all these different things, that's going to come with people getting locked up, that's going to come with this neighborhood, that the same neighborhoods that are in distress, we're talking about that need the, the resources to get out here and do community policing, what's going to happen when you catch that person that needs to get caught? Where are they going? What jail, what facility are they going to go to? And when we start to catch them and get together as a community, we catch 10 or 15 or 20 people, we get 20 people locked up a year, 30 are mur- 30 murderers locked up a year, there is no plan on what we're going to do after we get to a point where we can actually start reducing the numbers of crime within the city. Everybody does not need to be left up, locked up, for those people who have already committed crimes, there's enough people right now that I heard, uh, you know, that committed homicides that we haven't caught that could go to jails tomorrow if we caught everybody. So we need to be very particular right now when we talk about the, the public's interest, uh, because right now, even the public would say, we don't do business in their best interest. There is no, uh, plan that we all can say definitively can reduce crime, there is no plan that we can say definitively has changed criminal justice throughout the entire United States, and we're ready to throw millions of dollars into it. Every city that mirrors ours that has these same issues are trying to figure out a plan, and these cities are particular, just like there's a particular person, a particular culture here in the city, there are particulars that exist within our city that allows, that will allow other programs that work in other cities to completely work within their city. So we have to figure out specifically what works for the people here, what works for the mindset, what works for the culture. If we want to keep people out of jails, we have to figure those particular things out before they ever get to that place where the police are called and they need to be locked up, or they broke into law. When people break the law, they need a place to go at this particular time when it's a violent offense. And I believe within, uh, the next few years, especially with us getting mayors involved in the city, finally getting to a point where even black people, they are tired of seeing their mothers, daughters, cousins, we tired of seeing people get shot. You know, that old stigma of you're not saying nothing, that's almost out the window. We are at that cusp where people are starting to get to the point where they fed up, either they're going to get guns and get out here and shoot back, or people are going to start formulating communities that, that speak out, uh, in a collective, that do the best they can to fight back. Those are things we have been missing in our communities, and when those things start happening, and we start pushing people out, we need to ensure that there's a robust plan on, on how to put those people up, you know, away for good, and that, that's just what it, what it comes down to. Um, I believe we do need to make sure that any facilities where we're housing people at are, 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 uh, you know, up to par and definitely up to a place and up to standard where any livable community, you know, we're in the United States, nobody should be living like in a third world country, period, point blank. But individuals that are housed in jail nine times out of 10, if you've done something, it's not going to be a happy stay either way or go, if you know you're going to be there for a long time. You know, your living conditions aren't like you're living on, at home, you don't have a couch, you don't have a TV, you don't have all those, those things that you like. So yeah, naturally, you complain about the CEOs, you complain about your conditions, because somebody has to dictate your every move, every single day of your life, and that's sitting on the hard benches. I've been in the justice center before, I, I, I haven't slept inside of the workhouse, but I've slept in a justice center, it sucks in there. So I can only imagine, you know, and that's against, you know, they're saying this is a better place, I can only imagine how different it is in the workhouse, but the, the point still remains, when things happen and we have to, we, we have not formulate a plan that keeps people out of those particular places, we get locked up with traffic tickets and in there for four or five days, and that's ridiculous, those things shouldn't happen when people are just violating traffic unless there's some type of a crime that happened with it, or you hurt somebody. But those are things, once again, that's justice reform. The things that are happening out in the county where you have an alarming number of black people, same thing in the city, being locked up disproportionately, those are things that we work out within the culture and within actual justice reform itself. Jail reform, I believe, is the conversation that we're talking about, how to deal with our jails in particular, whether that's upgrading them, dealing with the people, the quality of life, jail reform is totally different from justice reform itself. Justice is what you get or finally gets when they get in jail, that's what you're looking for, that's, you know, that's, 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 that's where you end up. Dealing with the people who will be there, I think that's a, a, that's a conversation right now that's very sensitive for our people. We need to allow the people to have some sort of a plan in place that they can have I, an idea of where we are going with justice in this city, period, with jails in this city, period. Telling people right now that what's taking away the institutions where people are, are supposed to be being sent, I think it does not send this message when we have the highest amount of murders that we've had in 50 years. I know people, uh, have a need right now, uh, to follow through with what plans we've made, but the same plans that you made a year ago to go to, uh, Cancun, that got halted by the coronavirus, those same plans that you had to go to Thanksgiving dinner, those same things that you thought you were going to do this year, that changed. Every single person on the planet had to stop in their tracks and change what it is that they were doing. We don't want to change any type of progression that we made in the city, it's been hard to even have conversations about closing down jails, but we've gotten to a point, we can have those conversations, and we can actually get to a point where legislation is passed. But right now, things have changed, and as things continue to change within this world, we need to figure out within St. Louis in the grand scope of what's happening and what we can control, how we can be in better control of our city and give these people that live in this city some type of hope, because right now, it's hopelessness. There's bullets flying everywhere, people, cars are getting broken into, people are getting robbed, people's tires, catalytic converters are getting ripped off, these things are things that we have not handled as a city. You go knock on all these doors in these cities, people are going to be asking, where are the criminals? You can't ask nobody about taxing no more, where are the criminals? What are you going to do to make me feel safer in my house? Those same gunshots that used to plague the North Side, whether you like it or not, they are coming your way, I promise you. While we all sit in some type of a, a bubble sometimes, that bubble is getting ready to bust. The city itself is at an all-time high with itself, people are starving for direction, and we don't have one. And it's up to us to give this, these people that live in the city a direction when we make moves that change the whole facade of what this city looks like, and that, that is a big change. It changes the ideas for those who've been inside and been incarcerated, hey, there ain't nowhere else to go no more, they're not tripping off this, just like the speeding. Speeding is out of control, not because people wake up in the morning and they feel like speeding, it's because they know they won't get caught. There's a long line of, you can do what you like, and the police cannot chase you, they cannot pull you over if you go five or 10 blocks and you haven't shot nobody. When that rhetoric continues to go around the communities, you get lawlessness like you do right now. We can, we, you know, you got people riding around with their guns hanging out the window while they sitting outside on the sunroof. Those things are things you don't, you don't see in, in a lot of other places. These things have been allowed to fester in our city because we don't have a plan on how to help our people, how to deal with our people, how to deal with our jails, how to deal with justice, how to deal with all of these different things. We are hurrying up to make a decision that we've been talking about for a very, very long time, so it's not a quick, let's hurry up and knock this out. This is a buildup that has happened to where we are finally able to come to some type of a road, not a crossroads, but a road to where we all can at least say, this is something we all need to really look at, there's something here, we need to do something about this situation. But right this second, right now, I don't think the, the decision should be to close the workhouse with all of these different things stemming among, uh, over our heads, these different clouds that, 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 that completely block out our ability to see a clear path to the future. We don't know what's getting ready to happen on the next coming years, over the next few months. We don't know if people are going to come up with another toilet paper shortage, and people go crazy and run around and beat each other for, for toilet tissue, you know, that's, you know, just throwing it out there, because those things happen. I mean, who would have ever thought last year you'd see human beings fighting over toilet tissue? These things are happening in our lifetime, we need to ensure that we have a clear path and direction for the people within the city while we make very large decisions for their entire lives. And if we are going to make those decisions without a clear and concrete plan, they need to be involved in helping make that decision, so it's not just on us, it's not just a, hey, they didn't have a plan, they say, hey, we all agreed on it, and we didn't have a plan, now what are we going to do? So with that being said, I 100% support, um, uh, closing the workhouse with, uh, the right parameters in place, or our community, our, our people that live in this city will have some direction and guidance to whatever processes we're going to take and bring, uh, or whatever process we're going to take, so we can bring back some, some more resources to our, our city. But I, I, I 100% support this board bill also in ensuring that our people that live in this city have a vote at the same time during one of the most, uh, trying times in the history of mankind, like, we need to make sure that there is a plan. How are we going to run the city next year? How are these things going to play out? How is everybody psychologically affected by this? How is this summer going to go for us? Because we didn't deal with the homicides from the last summer. We was up 50 years, 50 years, 50 years worth of shooting last year. We not even talking about how many people got shot, that's how many homicides happen. Imagine how many people were actually shot guns last year. When we finally do something about these guns, and we can finally lock people up for dislodging these bullets on city property, we can finally get something done about this, you will see a lot more people in jail, and then that would hurtfully curtail the amount of people getting shot in this city, but that's the quid, that's the, that's the yin and the yang, and I hope to see that this year, I hope to see that in the years coming, we got to do something about this. So I, once again, I appreciate it, uh, with that, Mr. President, uh...
Thank you so much, Alderman from 3rd, Ald- Alderman from 1st. Oh, hold on for a second, Alderman from 1st, I skipped Alderman from the 13th. Both of you up there in the corner, Alderman from 13th.
That's all right. Thank you, uh, President, members of the board, I'll try and be brief. I said, um, the plan for closing the workhouse is still in effect, I'm in favor of that. It seems like it was upended by COVID, not by any sinister means or anything. Uh, now, listening to my, many of my colleagues, it seems like, uh, according to them, that the MSI is a better alternative than the justice center, so I want to take that into consideration, too. I would personally would like to see the plan, and, uh, it would be, the plan hopefully maybe would even utilize the MSI in some way, like the Alderman from the 1st said. Um, but then on the same token, I don't see any harm in getting a pulse of the people, of everybody. That's, that's it, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman from 1st.
Mr. President, members of the board.
Thanks for yielding also, thanks for yielding earlier.
No problem. Um, Mr. Pro- Mr. President, members of the board, since everybody is doing all this talk about what, uh, what we passed, I pulled out Board, I mean, ordinance 71217. So this is what happens when people don't read, or they're not attorneys and they read into it what they want to, or they are attorneys and they don't read it, because this is what the ordinance says. It, so it goes through all the things about the city charter, and according to Article 25, Section 1 of the St. Louis City Charter, recommended by the Board of Estimated Apportionment, amending the duties of Division of Correctional and Department of Health Hospitals, directing the Commissioner of Corrections to, to begin the process of closing the St. Louis City MSI, also known as the Workhouse, and directing the Budget Director to analyze the net cost savings to the general fund if MSI is no longer operated as a detainee facility and contained emergency clause. So it then goes through these steps of what is supposed to be done. So let's go here and say what it says, is this what it does? It says, uh, Article 25, Section 1, authorize the Board of Aldermen by ordinance adopted by two-thirds, two, by vote of two-thirds of the members, on recommendation of the Board of Estimated Apportionment, to discontinue any division established in the charter, create new or additional divisions, and determine, combine, and distrib- and distribute the functions and duties of the division, office, and employees, officers and employees. So we have to, we have to have passed something that says, we're changing it, we're getting rid of it, and we also have a recommendation from the Board of E&amp;A. Um, I'm not on public safety, so I'm wondering if the Alderman from the 23rd would yield, so I can ask him if we've actually gone through all these procedural steps that is required in this bill, if he knows.
Alderman from 23rd, will you yield a question to the Alderman from 1st?
Yes, I will.
Alderman from 1st.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Alderman, so, do you know, uh, because I don't see anything in this board bill that we actually said we are going to close the workhouse, we said we are going to begin the process, but let's just say, for argument's sake, that they think that, that, that's what it says. Do you know if the Board of E&amp;A has had, uh, uh, any meeting in, uh, which they, uh, recommended that we close the workhouse, has that been done? Do you know?
No, they, they have not, in, uh, my understanding is, the Board of Aldermen wouldn't even have the, uh, ability to close the workhouse, it is certainly on the mayor's office, and...
Well, no, we can make a, no, no, the charter says the board can close anything or change it on recom- but we have to have two-thirds of all the members, and then we have to have a recommendation from the Board of E&amp;A, that's what the charter says, and that's within this little board bill that everybody is talking about, because if we're going to start talking about board bill, Sharon Tyson's going to get it out, read every line of it, underline it, and then we're going to go through all the process, and then we're going to find out how much of the process we have not done, so we can stop putting misinformation out. I don't care about which side you own, we want it to be correct what we're telling people. So if we not, we ourselves, because in this board bill, I don't see where it's, we have passed an ordinance that says that we can, we're going to close the, the workhouse, but then additionally, if we had, the Board of E&amp;A would have to have something that they do a recommendation to close the workhouse. So I want to know, and I'm going to do a check off of all these things, but I'm just asking you now, I want to know if you know, as the Chair of Public Safety, has there been anything from the Board of E&amp;A that says they recommend we close the workhouse at this point?
There has not. The only...
Okay.
...we followed was to have the Commissioner come in as part of that bill to let us know his thoughts on how we would close the workhouse, didn't say we had to.
Okay, yeah, right. I'm going to get to that. So then it says, uh, the, talks about the workhouse, uh, built in 66, holding 100, 1,138 inmates, and recently it was under, uh, 1,000 detainees, uh, and it goes on to say, that workhouse can be accomplished in a manner that continues to protect the public at large and provide resources to reduce, reduce some of the root cause of crime. So then it goes into, Section 1 of this ordinance directs the Commissioner of Corrections to begin the process of closing the medium security institute, which we call the workhouse. The Commissioner of Corrections is hereby directed to review all contractual obligations specifically related to the housing of detainees at the workhouse, to determine the amount of notice the city has to give in order to end the contract and the costs associated with the contracts up to the date of the contracts end. So, and then it says, uh, compile a list of city personnel that currently work at MSI on their salary, contact with any facility within the state of Missouri that has available space for detainees, and determine the cost of outsourcing the housing of detainees currently in, in MSI. So we're not saying let people out, which what I, what I want to do by looking at how we're doing bond issues, we're saying just move them from the workhouse to someplace else. We're saying just moving from the workhouse to someplace else. We then say determine a monthly average of detainees in the mid- medium security institute for the previous 12 months. So that is what the Commissioner of Corrections, uh, is spoke, was supposed to do. And then he was supposed to report these findings to the Board of Estimated Apportionment and the Board of Aldermen's Public Safety Committee within 30 days of the effective date of this ordinance. Now this ordinance went into effect July 27th, I think it was, I have, July 24th, 2020. So, um, sometime in August, we should have had a report from the Commissioner of Corrections regarding the things I just talked about. Did we get some kind of report from the Commissioner of Corrections?
Yeah.
Alderman?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
He,
Okay, so he did what he's supposed.
He did.
Then it says the office, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying he did what he was supposed to. Uh, we did
Okay.
a report. And, and his report was, he, and he did contact the different, uh, jails. And the only replies back he got was one that was about an hour and a half from here, one was three hours. That's where he also told us if he put people to Justice Center, that he would have to overcrowd it and put them on boats or what seemed to be cots.
Okay. So he did what he's supposed to. Then it says evaluation of housing space in the City Justice Center and potential other use of the MSI. It says the Office of Board, the, the, I'm sorry, the Board of Public Service, Service is hereby directed to evaluate the structure and layout of the City Justice Center to determine the maximum capacity of, of detainees, withstanding the contract the city currently has with federal government to house federal detainees and the space necessary to meet the demands of the contact, of the contract. The Board of Public Service is further directed to perform an evaluation of MSI to determine if it can be repurposed for another city facility for some other benefits other than detention. Or if it is no longer to be open as a city facility, indicate the ongoing cost to maintain ownership of the vacant land and facility. So do you know, okay, if the Board of Public Service put some kind of a, uh, evaluation together? And if they did, did they give it to the, uh, the Public Safety Committee?
They did not, we did not receive that.
Okay. The Commissioner of Corrections is directed to provide all manner of information and assistance necessary or requested to the Board of Public Service to fulfill the directives of this session. The Board of Public Service shall report the findings to the Board of E and A and the Board of Alderman Public Safety Committee within 30 days. And you just said that didn't happen, okay? So we're going on to the next thing because, uh, a lot of us dropped the ball because all of us who was pushing for this, we had this in our hands, we should have been making sure this happened, okay? Um, it says the Commissioner of Corrections is hereby directed to contact alternative detainee housing sources to determine availability and cost of outsourcing housing of detainees to an other public detention facility that meets federal detainee stand, standards. So as the Alderman from the 21st was saying, we weren't going to just put the people out. That closing the workhouse doesn't mean you go free, it just means we move you around and maybe cost more. And it says the Director of Corrections shall report these findings to the Board of E and A and the Board of Alderman Public Safety Committee within 30 days of when this ordinance goes into effect. So is, is it my understanding Alderman from the 23rd that he did report to you the, uh, alternative cost, uh, for detainees? If we move the federal, uh, people, did he give you some kind of cost estimate at the Public Safety Committee?
Yes, he did. And not only did he, Paul Payne came in and also said, this is what the savings will be. But the public testimony that we allowed during all these meetings that I'm always being accused of not doing, said, no, the, the, uh, Paul Payne doesn't know what he's talking about. And there's over $8 million in savings, which is a little rough to believe only because we're only funding it at $8 million. Uh, the actual real savings according to them would be around a million to a million and a half dollars. If you trust in a half to, uh, Paul Payne. And, uh, the cost of housing, uh, varied per day depending on where they were. That didn't even include the cost of transportation to go out to bring them in for hearings and to go back out. Uh, so that, that wasn't even included in what they presented.
Okay, so and that is exactly the Budget Director, it says in here, is supposed to help the Commissioner of Corrections. So he did what he was supposed to. Section four said retention of staff. Section four of this or- ordinance directs the Director of Personnel to schedule interviews with all city employees whose jobs will become obsolete should the, it make mid- medium security institute no longer service a facility to house detainees. So it directs the Director of Personnel to then, um, determine the fitness of any current civil service position and interview tho- those people within 30 days of effectiveness of this ordinance, which would have been in August. And, um, try to find the different positions and keeping them at their salary. So I don't know, do you know if the Personnel Director did that or not?
I, I don't believe he did, but I, I honestly don't know.
Okay, um, section five, date to discontinue operation of MSI as a detention facility. The Commissioner of Corrections is directed within 45 days of the effective date of this ordinance to provide the Public Safety Committee of the Board of Aldermen and the Board of Estimated Apportionment a detailed plan to discontinue operating MSI as a facility to house detainees with a planned closure date by December 31st, 2020. As a lawyer, plan date and shall are very different directives, okay? When you allow somebody to plan, that is not definitive. So all of those people who have been saying that that was a mandate, that does not say that in here. It says that a plan date, which gives you difference and wiggle room to do something different, whether you like it or not. If you want to mandate something, you put in the ordinance in the law, you shall do it by this date. Doesn't say that. Okay, we're just going to go correcting right through here. Division of Supportive Reentry. Section six of this ordinance directs the Health Director of the City of St. Louis or anyone acting in such capacity to develop hiring criteria for social workers. Okay, the new person should be up under the div- the, the Division of Supportive Reentry. The Division of Supportive Reentry will work to connect detainees that have been determined to suffer from certain social, uh, criminal problems, including mental illness, that we're going to set up a division so that we could direct some of these people who are being locked up, instead of being locked up, that they would get social service. That's criminal justice reform, that's what, now that's a really good thing in here, okay? Um, the Division will report to a joint management team consisting of the Commissioner of Correction and Health Division. The Health Do-, uh, Director shall report a detail of the hiring criteria to the Board of Aldermen with Public Safety Committee within 30 days of the effective date of this ordinance. The Division will refund from any estimated or realized reduction in expenditures due to the closure of MSI as determined by section nine of this ordinance. So what I want to know is did you get something from the Health Commissioner or the Health Director about uh, hiring criteria to set up this whole new, uh, division to help people who have mental illnesses and other problems? Did the Public Safety Committee get something like that?
No, we didn't, but I would certainly support it in a, in a separate ordinance. I think it's important that we.
What's already in here? What I've said, what has been my position is that we should go through this thing and look at what was promised, what got done. And then let's not misinform people saying stuff was mandatory when it wasn't. And then we may, maybe need to clean this up. Sometimes you just drop the ball. I'll say I helped drop the ball because I am a person who reads every dagum thing. And so I thought that it said shall to, and now I'm reading it and it doesn't. So I'll take my part of the blame. Okay, we're re-envisioning the Public Safety, uh, Fund. The comptroller is authorized and directed to establish a fund to be designated as the re-envisioning the Public Safety Fund. Deposits to this fund shall be allocated annually to provide anti-poverty resources to neighborhoods disproportionately affected by violent crime. The annual amount deposited to the funds will be the $7.6 million currently allocated to the St. Louis City Jail. And in subsequent years, $16 million historically allocated for MSI operation. Less the cost of housing detainees and facilities not owned by the City of St. Louis, less the cost of any of maintaining the MSI security as a closed facility, less compensation for the former MSI staffs who have not yet been reassigned or entered their employment with the city, and less the cost associated with the Division of Supportive Reentry as determined in section eight of this ordinance. Any net proceeds from any sale or lease of the facility currently used as the MSI institute, institution will go into a re-envisioning the Public Safety Funds described in this section. The funds will be allocated per neighborhood through a formula based on violent crimes committed within that neighborhood. A line item budget for each neighborhood will be created based, based on a particular budgeting process in which neighborhood residents develop community generated ideas and intervention. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, in, in intervention around improving public safety, explore costs and feasibility and put those ideas to a community vote. So before we even would do any of this stuff, we still are talking about a community vote in this actual bill. Um, section eight, determination of expenditures, reduce, reduction due to closure of MSI. The Budget Division is directed to provide to the Board of E and A with an a- analysis of the estimated expenditures reduction in fiscal year 2021 based on the data gathered in section one, two, three, four, five, along with an estimated expenditure, expenditure reduction on an ongoing annual basis. The Budget Division will provide this analysis no longer than 60 days after the effective date of this ordinance. So if this ordinance went into effect July 24th, August, September, sometime in September, uh, right after we came back from, uh, break, we should have had some kind of report. Do you know if the Budget Division gave anything to E and A or did it give anything to the, uh, Public Safety Committee?
Other than, like I said, with, with Paul Payne when he explained, uh, that was it and, and I'm not aware of anything in either.
And finally, not including the emergency clause, um, and the severability clause, the last, section nine says detainees remanded to the City of St. Louis. Nothing in this ordinance shall absolve the city of any obligation to detain individuals remanded to the city through the court system for pre-trial custody. When I read this, this does not say what everybody has been saying that it said. It said we're going to put a plan together, we have a plan date of December 31st. It did not say that we shall have this done by this time. And so for all those people who hate misinformation, me being one of them, and that's why you have to read these things. Um, it doesn't say what you said, so we can't get mad. Um, and as I said before, we probably, if we were going to do it as a mandate, we probably should have had control of our budget and maybe did it that way. But may, I, I, I'm looking at now, maybe that wouldn't have been a good idea because, uh, if we're just moving people around, we're not doing reform. So I am going to come back with a, uh, resolution for next Friday. Um, I'm, I'm coming back with a, all these people are sending me stuff, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm going to come back with a resolution next Friday to have all the different people, if, uh, uh, the Alderman from the 23rd, if you don't mind. I want a resolution to have them come so us to discuss, uh, the ordinance, um, and where we are with this and where we're headed with this, so that people can stop putting out misinformation. And for those who say that it says it's a mandate and that's what we have, I dare you to find it in this ordinance because it's not in this ordinance. So would you have a problem if I would come with a resolution and we could do a hearing to investigate where we are with the, the steps that were outlined in this ordinance? That people are placing their hand on the Bible says we're, we're going to close it by, uh, December 31st?
I would have no problem. I would even say if we have to, I would even ask the President of the Board to even hold an extra meeting if necessary. I'm far criminal, uh, 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 helping, you know, I, you know, reform. I'm just not for punishing people worse than they're already being punished now.
I'm for, thank you, I have no further questions, um, I appreciate it. Um, Mr. President, members of the board, um, shame on me because I usually read everything and I kind of glance through some of this. I did vote for this, but it didn't say mandate, it said something else. You can let people start to say something on and on and on until they say that's the truth. That is a very dangerous thing for legislators to do. I try not for that to happen, but it's so much stuff, sometimes you miss it, but it doesn't say what you all are saying it said. And so it didn't get done by the 31st, but we should have an investigation asking where are we in this process? And then we should try to help this process alone. But let's not, please let's not give misinformation because we didn't read the, uh, the ordinance or the legislation. So I'm going to continue to support this, I'm not doing it because I'm so scared to avoid something. I don't think anybody in the city at this time, in my 30 years being in politics, says Sharon Tyson is scared of any vote. I don't care if all of you all vote one way, I'll be the no vote, okay, if I want to. So anybody who put that out, I'm not trying to escape closing the workhouse in my ordinance, I mean, in my resolution. I'm also going to ask a separate resolution that we start looking at the judges and what they're doing with the bond issues. And let's really look at some other kind of things we could do to get people out of jail. But, um, if you guys hadn't continued to insist that it was one way, I probably wouldn't have got this out. But, uh, I've been taught in law school that when people start saying it says something, you better pull it up and it better say that. It does not say that, anybody who says it does, you're getting out misinformation, pull the ordinance out yourself and read it. I will tell you where you can go to the page, you can go to page four of seven, line 21 and 22. It does not say what you say it says. Um, and shame on me and others who didn't read it correctly. And I'm going to continue to, uh, support the board bill because it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't do anything. But I am going to come back, uh, Friday with some, um, ways that we can kind of get some more information about where we're headed with closing the workhouse and where we're headed with real cr- criminal justice reform. Because if we're going to close the workhouse and move people out, that is not to other places, that's not criminal justice reform. And as you said, it's a mostly black people, and I've been knowing that since I was a public defender in 1989. And I've also known and talked to all the family members who had such a hard time trying to get to see their loved ones. So moving, moving them the heck out and still having to pay extra money, because it costs you more when you move people, that is not criminal justice, okay? So anybody who wants to be upset with me because I'm not doing what the progressives says, I don't do what anybody says when I think they're wrong. And I do believe that we do want criminal justice and we just got to do it the right way. And I continue to support, uh, the board here. Thank you so much, Mr. President, members of the board.
All right, thank you, Alderman, uh, Alderman from the 20th.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, colleagues. What an absolute slap in the face to advocates in the general public. This bill, uh, was absolutely characterized as one to close the workhouse. I'll go ahead and quote, uh, the sponsor of this bill, uh, in the news. "These bills will be a catalyst to a defined and organized process to effectively and safely close the workhouse while allowing for the funding of needed resources that are lacking in our community," President Reed said. Uh, you know, it is incumbent upon us to read every single word of every single bill, but we have to have trust among ourselves and with the general public. It is our duty to tell the truth about what it is that we are doing down here. And it is the duty of sponsors of every single bill to know them inside and out and to be able to speak intelligently and honestly to our colleagues and to the general public about what it is we are doing down here. And to fail to do that is a slap in the face. That's all I have, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Alderman from the 21st.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is becoming redundant, I move to call the question.
I, I think, I, I think we're pretty well wrapped up.
Second.
Seconded, Alan 30.
President was trying to avoid an additional vote and.
Yeah, because I think we're there, I think we're there. I think, I think we're, uh, Alderman Davis just got to make some closing.
Okay, I, I, I redraw my motion, Mr. President.
It'll be quick, it'll be quick. Uh, Alderman from the 19th, I think you were the last person.
And I'll be very quick, uh, I want to reiterate that, um, you did say that we were going to work towards a plan to close the workhouse. That's what's in the bill. I've always told people we're working on a plan that's very fluid. And, uh, we've got reports on it, we know where we're headed, but we also know that's not criminal justice. And you never said that the workhouse would close on the 31st. We said we need a plan, it's written there. We've always said it was about getting the plan to move in that direction and do it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. All right, it's been moved by the Alderman from 22nd, uh, seconded by Alderman from the 23rd that we perfect board bill two 12 committee substitute.
Point Alderman, Mr. President.
Uh, Alderman from the 22nd, you're recognized to close.
Okay, thank you.
Just reminding you where we were. It's been a while, go ahead.
First of all, I, I want to compliment the Alderman from the first ward for her touchdown. Um, Alderman. Alderman Vacaro and I have been saying for the longest that the board bill ninety-two did not mandate that we close the workhouse. But what it did say is that we will come up with a plan and that plan required a process. And I'll go back to saying that I voted for it with trepidation because I thought that date was a short window for the departments to gather all the data that they needed to make the right responsible decision. And that has proven true. Um, I've heard that this is kicking the can down the road. I, I don't understand how it is. This has nothing to do with interrupting the process of closing the workhouse. Sometime, we want things so bad, we hear only what we wanna hear and we see only what we wanna see. We become, become tone deaf and tunnel vision. And I think a lot of people have gotten caught up in that. And at the end of the day, what I'm trying to do with this, and I'm gonna go back and read the preamble, so it's, it's real clear. This board bill is an ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the city of St. Louis a non-binding preferential vote authorized by Article Two, Section Nine of the city's charter to vote on the question of whether the city should close the Division of Corrections Medium Security Institution in order to assist the Board of Alderman, this body, the mayor, and comptroller in the management and the direction of the medium security institution. This will become yet another piece of data for us to use on whether or not it's the right thing to do. This vote will in no way impede this process that we're going under right now. And I just feel like some of my colleagues are hijacking and creating a whole narrative that's just false. And it's not right. I am not trying to slight the coalition for all the hard work that they've done. I salute them. But this also gives us an opportunity to go back again and educate our community, because I'm telling you, the people that I represent, they don't get it. And I don't think there's any person that can tell me the percentage of people that they think even know about board bill ninety-two in the city of St. Louis. The only people that know about board bill ninety-two are the people that operate in that space. That's it. And when you're an advocacy group, you go out and you tell people what you want them to hear because you have an agenda. And there's nothing wrong with that. They're no different than, um, the lobbyists that lobby the Board of Alderman or, or the state. They tell us what they want us to hear. But then we have good members down here that go through the weeds and they look and actually read the bill and say, hey, wait a minute, that's not what you're saying. I thought what I was doing was a good deed. There was nothing nefarious in doing what I did to put this before the people. We heard about why putting a vote of the airport privation before the people was a big deal. And I get it. I understand why people pushed for that. This is putting a vote before the people. But what's so cool about it? It's like a survey. It's a free survey. It's free. It does not cost the city taxpayers any additional money. I am starting to question people's motives because I don't understand why you would be against this. It's almost like there's something behind this that's gonna blow up that we don't know about. And if you know, I wish you would have said it. I have heard nothing from any of my colleagues today that would suggest that somehow having the public vote on this is gonna stop the closing of the workhouse. Not one person made a good argument for that. And we have several lawyers at the Board of Alderman, and some of them are pro-close the workhouse. But nobody made the argument. To vote no against this says you don't care if the people vote on it or not. That's what it says. Give the people a right to vote on it. And let's make sure they have the right information. Let's make sure that they know the pros and the cons. Sometime, great ideas have unintended consequences. And before I put my seal of approval on closing the workhouse, I wanna know when the Justice Center gets overcrowded, where will they go? Will they go to Dallas, Texas and make it harder for people to see their loved ones? Will they go to the East Coast? Will they go to Montana? They go to Utah? We haven't even gotten to that place. Let's trust the process. I believe in the work that the coalition to close the workhouse has been doing. There is value in asking the public, what would they wanna do with their institution?
Okay, Mr. Uh, uh, Alderman, you, go ahead. You were wrapping up.
President, I close. I ask for favorable consideration.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. It's been moved by Alderman from twenty-second, second about Alderman from twenty-third that we perfect board bill two twelve committee substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Basley?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard?
Uh, aye.
Alderman Ingracia?
No.
Alderman Colder?
Aye.
Alderman Rice?
No.
Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman Gunther?
No.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderman Martin?
No.
Alderman Grass?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Green? Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Todd?
No.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer? Alderman Muhammad?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
No.
Alderman Con? Alderman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Navarro?
No.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Green?
No.
I'm sorry, that was no.
Correct.
Thank you. Alderman Spencer?
No.
Alderman Con?
Aye.
Twenty, aye votes and nine no votes.
By your vote, staying the motion, Alderman from twenty-second and perfected board bill two twelve committee substitute.
Board Bill two zero two sponsored by Alderman Boyd, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Howard, and Alderman Muhammad. An ordinance authorizing and directing the chief of police on behalf of the mayor and the city of St. Louis to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the Missouri Department of Public Safety Office of Homeland Security to fund the twenty nineteen Project Safe Neighborhoods program upon the approval of the Board of Estuement and Apportement and to expand funds by entering into contracts otherwise for grant purposes and containing an emergency clause.
Uh, Alderman Boyd, uh, you recognize on perfection of board bill two oh two.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for perfection of board bill two zero two.
Second.
Move by Alderman from the twenty-second, second about Alderman from the tenth and the twenty-third. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any disc-
The first ward, Mr. President.
Oh, Alderman from the first. I didn't see, you were up in the corner on my screen. Uh, all the one from the first.
Okay, I put my hand up definitively and I put my hand up, so I did both ways.
I know, that, that was, I, I, I didn't see you that time.
Okay. Um, um, Mr. President, members of the board, it's Alderman from the twenty-second with yield.
Alderman from twenty-second with yield to Alderman from the first.
Yes.
Um, Alderman, I'm not necessarily for or against this. I just wanted to know more about it. I don't know anything about it, Keith. So that's why I asked it to be taken off the consent calendar. I wanted you to give me a little rundown about how this program works.
Sure. Um, there's an attachment inside the board bill, and the nitty gritty of it is basically that the, the city of St. Louis would get about fifty thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars that would be used to support the gang task force efforts to combat illegal activities, violence with criminal groups and gangs or transition organizations. And then, uh, the largest portion, which is seventy-three thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars, will be used for enhanced enforcement, um, of the, um, what do you call it? The gun detection systems, shot spotter, as we know it.
Oh, yes, I do. And my question is, um, so, uh, is Department of Public Safety, Office of Homeland Security, um, so they're help, they'll help us to fund this, uh, two thousand and nineteen Project Safe Street?
Yeah, the money, the money is coming through that agency.
Okay.
We'll be the one handling it.
You'll be the one handling it?
No, the police, the, our police department.
I was gonna say, I want all of the shot spot money. Okay. I have no further questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from twenty-second, you recognize for a very quick close.
Uh.
Not saying anything. You burned your time up on the last one.
Mr. President.
A little fast.
I renew my motion.
All right. It's been moved by Alderman from twenty-second, second by Alderman from tenth and the twenty-third that we perfect board bill two oh two. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
That is the extent of board bills for perfection.
Third reading consent. And then all the one from the first, before we get there, all the one from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I request a board bill seventy-six, seventy-nine, one oh nine.
Hold on a second. Seventy-six.
The first, I, I thought I'd tell you, is the first one.
One oh nine.
One ten.
One ten.
One sixteen.
One sixteen.
One twenty-five.
One twenty-five.
One twenty-eight.
One twenty-eight.
One thirty.
One thirty.
One thirty-one.
One thirty-one.
One thirty-seven.
One thirty-seven.
And one forty-two.
And one forty-two.
So, and that be removed from the third reading consent calendar because in, uh, our, right, because in rules committee, we decided that we were gonna ask for all development, that tax abatement of TIF be moved to the consent calendar. And I, I'm gonna send a letter out from the rules committee. Um, with this, uh, closing of the schools, we wanna be more careful about what we're, uh, voting on instead of voting just unanimously consent. So, um, we're gonna be acting for that for all development deals. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Um, board bills, move board, the following board bills to the regular third reading calendar and move them in order as they show on this current, uh, third reading consent calendar. Board Bill seventy-six, seventy-nine, one oh nine, one ten, one sixteen, one twenty-five, one twenty-eight, one tw- one thirty, one thirty-one, one thirty, one thirty-seven, and one forty-two. Please move those to the regular third reading calendar.
Oh, noted.
All right, third reading consent.
Board Bill one forty-seven, one forty-nine, and one fifty-six.
All right. And Madam Clerk, uh, board bill one oh, uh, at the request of the sponsor, please place board bill one oh eight on the third reading informal calendar. Uh, Alderman from twenty-first, would you, you still want board bill one oh eight?
Yes, please, Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So please place board bill one oh eight on the third reading informal calendar.
Oh, noted.
All right, uh, yeah, start over. Let's just make sure we got it.
Board Bill one forty-seven, one forty-nine, and one fifty-six.
All right. Alderman from twenty-second, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Second.
Move by Alderman from twenty-second, second by Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Basley?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Evans?
Getting it in.
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Ingracia?
Aye.
Alderman Colder?
Aye.
Alderman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Grass?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Todd?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Muhammad?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Con?
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Navarro? President Reed?
Aye.
Twenty-nine aye votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the twenty-second and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of engrossments.
Did you want me to start with board bill seventy-seven as amended or go with the?
Uh, no, it would be, uh.
The one that was on consent first.
The one that was on consent first, and we'll take the other one, I think.
Okay. Board Bill seventy-six sponsored by Alderman Ballmer. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for twenty-seven thirty-two fifty-nine street area.
Alderman from tenth, you recognize on the third reading, final passage of board bill seventy-six.
Um, I move for, uh, passage of board bill seventy-six.
Been moved by Alderman from tenth, uh.
Roll call.
All right, that was too quick. Who said second real quick? Was it Alderman from sixteen? That's what the, been moved, moved by Alderman from tenth, second by Alderman from the sixteenth. Uh, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. I did hit my hand up, but it's okay. Where, okay. You wanna wait till the next one?
Well, I just want to explain why I'm not going to be voting on any of these.
Okay, all right, please, go ahead.
This isn't against, this isn't against anybody, but, you know, in my word, we haven't done any, and what has been thrown in my face by a couple of the Aldermen, and I couldn't mention who they are, and they said, well, you voted on all of them anyway, so from now on, unless the Alder person could really explain why this is so important and why it would be needed, it's not against any Alderman, I just don't plan to vote for these. So, the schools are saying, you know, so, so, I just want to make sure this isn't about being against anybody, but it's about, just, it's going to have to be something really exciting, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 10th, you recognize the close. Just renew your motion. Alderman from 10th, you recognize the close.
Yeah, I renew my motion.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from 10th, second by Alderman from 16th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 76. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
President.
Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Gracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
No.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquero.
I'll vote present.
Alderman Orion.
No.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. 23 aye votes, two no votes, and three voting present.
My vote is staying in motion, Alderman from 10th, third read and final pass of Board Bill 76.
Board Bill 79, sponsored by Alderman Todd, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated May 26, 2020 for the 528 North Newstead Avenue area.
Alderman from 18th, you recognize on third read and final passage of Board Bill 79.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, this development.
Would you like to make a motion to third read and final passage?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to third read and final passage.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman from 18th, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second by Alderman from the 8th. Alderman from 18th, please proceed.
This is at 525 North Euclid, this building is a gut rehab. It will bring, this building will help to bring up the neighborhood, and it will also help to stabilize the neighborhood, provide work, and continue our growth and our ward.
Okay, any further discussion, any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the 18th and seconded by Alderman from the 8th, that we third read and final pass Board Bill 79.
Previous, I was going to say previous roll.
There's been an objection to previous roll. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Gracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther. I'm sorry, Alderman, was that aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Spencer.
Alderman Tyus is aye, sorry.
Alderman Spencer.
Looks like she's gone again.
28 aye votes.
All right, my vote is staying in motion, Alderman from the 18th and third read and final pass of Board Bill 79.
Board Bill 109, sponsored by Alderman Ballmer, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for the 5520 Daggett Avenue.
Alderman from the 10th, you recognize on the third read and final passage of Board Bill 109.
I move that we third pass and finally read and third pass, or final pass and third read Board Bill 109. I'm getting sloppy here, sorry.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman from 10th, second by Alderman from 14th, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
President.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Gracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Howard. Alderman Green.
No.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
No.
Alderman Con. Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
Aldo, I'm sorry, President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Con. 23 aye votes, two no votes, and two voting present.
My vote is staying in motion, Alderman from the 10th and third read and finally pass Board Bill 109.
Board Bill 110, sponsored by Alderman Ballmer, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 5509 Magnolia Avenue.
Alderman from 10th, you recognize on the third read and final passage of Board Bill 110.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to third read and finally pass Board Bill 110.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman from the 10th, second by Alderman from the 9th, any discussion?
Previous roll.
Been a request for previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Board Bill 116, sponsored by Alderman Spencer, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated April 21, 2020 for 3712, 3716 Nebraska Avenue, and 3717, 3719, 3728, 3729, and 3730 Oregon Avenue.
Alderman from the 20th, you recognize on third read and final passage of Board Bill 116.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for perfection of Board Bill. I'm sorry, I got lost in the agenda here, Mr. President. The Board Bill. 116. Thank you, Alderman Rice, Board Bill 116.
We're not on the perfection calendar, Alderman from 20th.
Third read and final pass.
Alderman from the 20th, we're not on the perfection calendar.
Excuse me, Mr. President, I apologize. I had a family emergency here on my end. I move.
We're on the third reading, we're on the third read and final passage.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for final, third read and final passage of Board Bill 116.
Moved by Alderman from the 20th, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second by Alderman from the 9th, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yeah, yeah, I have a discussion.
Alderman from 3rd.
That's right, real quick, I can't discuss the board bill, right?
Yes, you can discuss.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. I just want some clarification. Listen, I know there's a lot going on, our fellow Alder people with what's going on within the city. We got a lot going on with the school boards. There's a lot of chatter about our missed use of funds and tax abatement in general. Those have been constant conversations. We are in a public light right now, so I just, I just want to ask a quick question, just just for clarification purposes. Is there a reason, and this is, I'm sorry, Alderman of the 20th?
Alderman from the 20th, will you answer questions to Alderman from the 3rd? Alderman from the 20th, will you, Alderman from 3rd, please proceed.
Thank you, just trying to get a general basis so I can kind of understand how we are gauging things at this point. It's always good to kind of get an idea of kind of best way to move things through the board and idea what our colleagues are thinking. I just, you know, a few of us voted no on Alderman Todd's Board Bill. I just wanted to get his abatement. No, am I tripping?
I apologize, Alderman from the 3rd, I had to step out. We were having a bit of a family emergency at the moment. I did not intend to vote no on Alderman Todd's bill, nor was, I hope I, I did not, I wasn't able to vote during that time, and it was definitely not my intention to vote no.
Yeah, my apologies. So I was just trying to get, and I know the last few ones we voted no on, and kind of we're at this one now, and we're going to go through and probably do the roll call, our previous roll, so I was just looking at the different board bills that was coming through and reading which ones, so I was just kind of curious on which one we were going to vote no or yes on, so, you know, my apologies. Thought that was a no vote that happened. Was going to ask some questions to all those who voted no thus far, so once again, my apologies.
Alderman, I respect your looking into all of these abatements. I will always be happy to answer questions, and I think we could all do a better job, myself included, in looking further into these abatements, so I appreciate your efforts here, and I'm happy to answer any questions about this one in particular, or.
I didn't, I just was trying to figure out and trying to gauge, you know, kind of what the general no and the yes, just getting an idea of kind of what we were going with everything, so, you know, I appreciate it once again that I used for.
Sure.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from 20th, second by Alderman from the 9th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 116. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. President, just real quickly, point of order, there's two of my colleagues with their hands raised.
Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, if I would, if you would, if Alderman from the 20th would let me explain a little bit what we're doing, and Alderman from the 3rd, the reason why some of us are voting present or no is that because these tax abatement, everything comes to our committee. When it came to our committee, we started looking at them, we have to read everything, and we started looking at the difference, and when they got tax abatement, and then the amount of money the schools would get when the tax abatement was over, and it was substantial, so we decided that we were going to start asking for all of the tax abatements and TIFs to go on to the regular calendar so we could have discussions about them, because we have some people that are getting 95%, you know, 15 years, 20 years, and that, and that we have to, if we're going to go after the school board for say, for closing our schools down, then they came back to us and said, well, what about all this tax abatement you're doing? So, and I've been like that about TIF for a while now, you know, I don't vote for TIF, but, but we also saw the amount of money that we were losing to the school systems on tax abatement, so for me, I'm not voting for anything except for something that is really needed. I voted for Alderman Todd's because that's in an area that's needed, that's what we were supposed to be using. I think everybody voted for Alderman Todd's because it's in an area that we're supposed to be having incentives, and then all these other places that we're not supposed to be having incentives, then I got a question about them, and so do other people in the committee, and we are committed to keeping our schools open, and we're going to have to do a better job at the Board of Aldermen, so that is why we ask this. I'm voting present this time instead of no, because we didn't give you all warning, but we wanted to give you warning to say that we're going to really be questioning most of the committee about who's getting the tax abatement and why, and does it, does it really fit the need, and we have to do a better job, so that's why we're doing that. We're not going to be voting against places that need it.
All right, thank you.
Alderman, Mr. President, members of the board, may I inquire of Alderman from the 20th, please?
Yes, Alderman from 20th, will you yield a question until Alderman from the 1st?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Alderman from the first, please proceed.
Okay, Alderwoman, I, I know people always think that it's only North St. Louis that has needs. I know you have a community that also is fighting to, uh. Uh, to do development. So we didn't just say that it was all gonna be in North St. Louis. I, you know, I just, I kind of have a question about why it's a ten year ninety-five. I've seen some other people that do fifty, uh, fifty percent and I would just want you to explain why it does ninety-five. I do know you need to do development in your area. So I'm not even questioning that. So can you just give me a little background about this, please?
Sure. Thank you, Alderwoman from the first. Uh, the, I was really led here by SLDC. This is a Habitat for Humanity bill. Um, I have to say, um, you know, Habitat for Humanity, uh, this is their first project in Grabway Park. Um, they've struggled to come in because. Uh, you know, they wanted to make sure their numbers were, they, they, they have been working north of us. Um, I'm grateful to see that. Um, you know, we've stabilized enough for Habitat, uh, if you will. I mean, I know that sounds crazy, but the reality is that we struggled to get a project that made sense for them. Um, so, um, the project really, the, the amount of abatement was, uh, determined by SLDC and, uh, we went with that.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the twelfth. Alderman from the twelfth. All right, Alderwoman from the.
Thank you. I have a statement. I'd like, I mean, I just, there's something I'd like to say.
Okay.
So I'm new, uh, again, and engrossment is a sharp learning curve and, but, and we have a good teacher. But I've been asking questions about tax abatements and TIPS, especially with the public schools being in the spotlight right now. Um. I had a meeting with CDA yesterday and they have cleared up some of my questions that I had along with Alderwoman Tyus. So, um, I think I have a better understanding of things now. And I just, that's where this is all originating from, is really from having questions. So I'm learning.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Uh, Alderman from the fifth. All right. Alderman from the fifth.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, uh.
Oh, that's all right.
Mr. President, members of the committee, um, I guess I'm, I'm a little bit confused about, um, what, what's going on with the, I guess, with what we're doing regarding tax abatements. Uh, typically the tax abatements do come, um, through neighborhood development. People have an opportunity, uh, to, to speak on them or whatever. And, um, I guess, you know. We're under the scrutiny regarding the tax abatements, but it's easy to be against tax abatement when you've had your whole ward built up with tax abatements, you know? And so now that, uh, development is moving to North St. Louis and we need tax abatements and TIPS and other incentives to help develop our, our wards. I think it's, I find it strange that the people who are vehemently against it, they rebuilt their whole community with them. And so. It's like if somebody bankrupted the school system, hey, it wasn't North St. Louis that did it. So let's just keep things in perspective. And, um, and how we move forward. And I, and I think it's kind of sad when it's, it's usually always the same people vote no on stuff, you know? Nobody elects you to vote no all the time. If you're down here voting no on everything, then you're, you're, you're not serving your constituents, you're being counterproductive, you're not finding the means. To, um, work across the aisle or work with people to get something done. And so that, that's all I, I have on that. I'm. I'm kind of confused how this little slate or whatever this was, was done in the Rules Committee when the tax abatements come to neighborhood development. So. Is, I just think that we're getting, um, in a space down here where it's, it's petty. And it's just not in the best interest of what we should be doing as Alderpeople. And so I, that's all I have on it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the fourteenth.
Mr. President, I would like to ask Alderwoman, to ask if the Alderwoman from the first would yield her questions?
Alderman from the first, will you yield a question to Alderman from the fourteenth? Alderman.
Yes, I will, Mr. President.
Alderman from the fourteenth, please proceed.
Um, Alderwoman, I, I'm kind of confused. You're saying that we, um, and I'm not sure, you know, as the Alderwoman from the fifth said. These either go through HUDs or they go through neighborhood development and then you're saying we are gonna hold these. I, I, I'm not sure who, who we is.
No, I didn't say.
What, maybe I misunderstood. Please clarify.
No, I did not say that. I said we, we had concerns in the Rules Committee, which we also read our bills. We don't have to come to other committees. We didn't say we were gonna hold them. We voted them right out. In fact, that's why they're before you now, okay? What we said is that we were gonna be discerning on what we voted for. We still get a vote as a member of the Board of Aldermen. And we were gonna be looking at these because, as you know, being on Rules Committee, we actually get to read things more indefinitely than most people do. And so we started to look at some of these tax abatements, especially when the school board pushed back and said. If you're gonna push back about saying closing the schools, what about you guys? You're doing all that tax abatement and TIPS. Now, my pushback to them was, why don't you come over here and lobby it against it? But they, they were not wrong. I have been a long opponent of TIPS, not just because, because I'm trying to be petty, because it does hurt the school system. But I, I realized as I was looking at these tax abatements, that there are some tax abatements that's taking a big bite out of the apple. So I'm not voting no on anything today. I'm voting present. But I am going to start to vote no, not on the ones like in, um, that's in, in south of Del Mar and things like that. Also. Not on, uh, their people in the, uh, their spaces in the, uh, twentieth ward, the twenty-fifth ward. It's gonna be on a case by case analysis about why are you getting this amount? Why is it ninety-five percent, ten years? Uh, and we did bring and ask Mr. uh, Lufat, and it wasn't that we don't get to ask questions too, just because we've been in another committee. Um, we also get to ask questions and it is not pettiness, it is a voting of the conscience. And I vote my conscience all the time and I don't always vote no. And I'm not, we weren't trying to hold anything up because we could slow things down. And we, we do a really good job of getting things out. Is that, that I think personally we give too much tax abatement and so do some other members of the committee. But I didn't give, uh, uh, I was gonna actually send you guys a note, which I will do over the weekend, what we decided. But I decided personally to vote present rather than no because we had not given notice. But we are, some of the members, not all of them, are gonna be taking a closer look how our vote is with tax abatement. Did that explain?
Thank you. I just wanted clarity because I, I wasn't clear on what you meant by you were going to be, you know, what you were going to do. So that clarifies and I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
All right, Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Would the Alderwoman from the twentieth yield for questions?
Alderman from the twentieth, will you yield the questions to Alderman from the seventh?
Yes, of course.
I guess it's just one question, really. Uh, Alderwoman, uh, congrats on the Habitat project. I've, I've worked with them, uh, on some, some homes they're doing, uh, in the seventh ward along Tucker there. Um, and they've turned out really well and it, I think the project's been a success. Do you, I just wanted to ask you about the design. Do you know, are they using the, uh, a similar design? Uh, as the homes they built on Tucker? I know they, they contracted with a, an architecture firm locally to, to create that design. I think their intention was to move it around the city. Uh, and I was curious if they were using that design in the twentieth ward.
Uh, I appreciate this question. I really truly care about design a lot, um, especially in. Recognizing these things are gonna be around for the long haul. It's my understanding they're not. This is gonna be within, uh, with the Art Place project. So they'll be a little bit different than the other Habitat homes. They're gonna go through a review process. So they're gonna be a little bit different than, uh, the, the other more traditional Habitat homes. The final design is not something I have in front of me so. Uh, at this point, um, but I, I feel good about the folks involved. They have a panel, a board that includes residents of the surrounding area. Uh, as well as other stakeholders.
Great. Good luck with the project. Thank you. Nothing further.
Thank you, Alderman.
Alderman from the twenty-third.
First off, yes, we did talk about this, uh, in HUDs and I agree with the Alderwoman. From the first, which isn't always the case, but I do on this. I haven't done tax abatement in the twenty-third ward because I don't believe. The twenty-third ward where we got houses that are selling for three hundred plus thousand dollars should have tax abatement. But if we're just gonna do, uh, just automatic courtesy, I'm gonna start, because it's politically great for me. I'm gonna start just abating everybody's house. I don't understand why there's an issue. I have no problem in, in areas and I certainly, when it comes to, uh, Alderwoman. Uh, Tamika Hubbard's ward, I think that's the areas that are targeted, uh, for abatement, for the longer abatement. You know, this all kicked about, uh, and, and, and when the Alderman from the ninth called me out. Saying, well, you vote for all this stuff. When, when the brewery got, the, whatever he put in was for a pretty massive break for the brewery. Uh, you know, so this is again, I said at the very beginning, this is not against any Alderman. This stuff's gonna pass with or without me, I'm sure. It's really about what came up in that committee when we're doing these ninety-year, whatever, ninety percent for ever tax abatements. You know, where a five-year would be good because five-year young, something that's not getting any taxes. In five years, it'll not only catch up, it'll, it'll, it'll really do well. But we, we had gone through this and they came up with this big, um. Uh, program or plan that says in order to do tax abatement. You gotta have all these different criteria in place, which I haven't seen that yet either. But if the cases were just gonna be doing this from now on, count me in. I have people asking me for tax abatement all the time. There's two houses on Fidler I didn't do it for. There's two houses on Hancock I refused to do it for. There's one on Arthur that I refused to do it for. But if we're gonna do automatic courtesy, then just let me know. You can text me. Then from now on, I'll be a yes vote and you can vote yes on mine and I will start tax abating the whole twenty-third ward. I think that's fair. I don't think, you know, I, it, it came up and it made sense to me that we're tax abating areas that homes are selling. You know, for a lot of money. And whether it's the Central West End or downtown or whatever we're doing. It does seem to me that it doesn't make sense. And again, there was this whole big thing that was supposed to be, uh, how you can do tax abatement and how long you're allowed to do tax abatement. I haven't seen that. Again, this is not a vote against anybody. Cause I'm sure this stuff's gonna pass either way. It's that this was thrown up in my face that you vote for all this tax abatement. When it was simply just being courteous. And I didn't appreciate that. So now I'm taking a little bit more of a look as how long these abatements are. If it's an area that really could use it, I, I don't have a problem with where they tore that foundry down on the hill. That thing was a mess for a long time ago. And, you know, I, I can see where the, you know, some of these things like that would, would warrant that to get people to come in. I just want to make sure that I'm looking at these and that we're doing this in the best way possible. That makes the best sense for not only the schools, but the taxpayers of the city of St. Louis. And again, this is not, uh, against any Alderman. You know, I hope we don't start getting in the, well, you voted against me, I'm gonna vote against you. Because if you want to do just everything on automatic courtesy, count me in. I have a whole lot of stuff that wants tax abatement. And I'll start bringing them in, uh, right away. And that's really all I have to say.
All right, uh, Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry, I'm having some, uh, difficulty with raising my hand. So I appreciate you.
Oh, you are.
Great. Um, you know, I, I made a, a comment and the, uh, the chat section of the, uh, you know. Our, our meeting here, but I have to say that this is, uh, really kind of redundant. We all have an opportunity to show up in the Neighborhood Development Committee to ask questions about these board bills. Ask questions of the developers, of SLDC, of the sponsors of the board bills, anyone that is currently participating on this call who is, you know. Sat at this call as an Alderperson has the right to attend. Um, as the most recent, uh, previous chair of that committee, I would recognize anyone who was in attendance at those meetings to ask questions of the sponsor of the bill or the developer. I know, you know, the current, uh, Chair Alderwoman Hubbard, um, would likely provide that same courtesy to anyone who wants to ask questions of these bills before the committee. Um, you know, I, I have no issue whatsoever, you know, to, uh, you know, my colleague from the first ward, uh, and her committee. Um, you know, wanting to bring these off of the consent calendar and voting on these individually. I know that many of our colleagues. May have specific concerns with respect to individual redevelopment bills. And, you know, by all means, if you want to take them off the consent calendar, so be it. But getting into nuts and bolts and into the weeds with respect to every single one of these development bills, that should be done in committee. That is why we have those committee hearings. If we're not going to do that anymore, then we no longer need to have a Neighborhood Development Committee and we can just litigate this on the floor of the Board of Aldermen at every single meeting. I have no objections whatsoever to people bringing these off of the consent calendar and voting their conscience with respect to these board bills. I have no objection to that whatsoever. However, asking bill, you know, bill sponsors about the aesthetics of a project and, you know. Nonsense like that that should be taken out in committee. If you have a concern about it, show up at committee. Ask the questions in committee. You know, you have the opportunity to do it then. I know we have a very, you know, uh, new body politic. Uh, but that is the opportunity for folks to ask those questions. So, you know, again, I have no, uh, no qualms, no issues whatsoever with these being taken off of the consent calendar. I, I support that actually. I think that it's a good thing, but, you know, for us to just litigate every single board bill, a redevelopment bill that comes before us. When we have that opportunity already in committee and there's a, you know, number of us that sit on that committee that endure. You know, an hour, two hour, sometimes three hour long committee hearing, going through this, these various board bills in order to, you know, get them out to us. Or in some cases, they don't pass out of committee. I will admit that that's an exception more than a rule. Um, but, you know, I think that there is the opportunity for anyone at this board to ask those questions and make their concerns known in the committee. So, you know, I think it's particularly frustrating, you know, as we're sitting here, what, in a four and a half hour long meeting. That we're going to start going through every single redevelopment bill and allowing twenty-eight different people to ask questions that come to mind. About any potential development going on in a different neighborhood or a different part of the city. If you want to vote no on it, vote no on it. So be it. But to re-litigate it, you have that opportunity in committee to ask those questions. Pull them off of consent, please. Pull them off of consent. Vote your conscience. But to, you know, ask questions on the floor of every single redevelopment plan, if you're gonna do it for one, you better do it for all of them. And if you're going to do that, then we might as well abolish the Neighborhood Development Committee as a whole. Cause that's what they're entrusted to do, is to have those conversations, learn those facts and figures, understand what the projects are. And make a determination as to whether or not they fit the guidelines that have been put together based off of the resolution that this board passed with regard to incentive reform and move things forward. I'm all about looking at incentive reform again and seeing what we can do better. I would imagine that the current chair of the committee would also agree with that statement. But this is, this is really going to, uh, you know, drag things out more than they should if we have the entire body. Doing the job of the Neighborhood Development Committee. And so again, no issues whatsoever with respect to pulling them off of the consent calendar. Vote your conscience on it. But I think we have to give due consideration with respect to how we're handling this going forward. Cause otherwise we're looking at six hour long meetings every week. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um. I'm kind of surprised to say this, but I'm really disappointed in my colleague from the twenty-fifth ward. Um. We are all not available for committee hearings. That is one place that we are allowed to argue. Um, and have conversation about board bills. That is one place that we are allowed to argue and have conversation about board bills. But that's not the only place that we are allowed to ask questions. And I'm sure that it's annoying. I mean, this is not what I was planning on, on doing today either. But it's our job to vet these board bills both in committee and on the floor. And so as long as it takes, I mean, maybe we need to restrict ourselves and start having some rules in place about how long people are allowed to talk on each specific issue. But trying to put a clamp on, he was allowed to ask what questions when, especially when we don't even have any process in place by which, even though we don't need to, we overlap meetings constantly at the board. And I am not in disagreement with the people who are voting present or no on these bills. But in my mind, we have heard from the school district, we have the potential to make real change, but to punish the aldermen who have pending board bills in the coffer just seems absurd to me. We should do differently. We should do better moving forward. But the performative action of pulling ten board bills off of a calendar just seems absolutely absurd to me. Thank you so much.
All right, Alderman. Think Alderman from the twenty-second, you haven't spoken yet.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I wanna thank the full board for this great educational process. I think it would be very enlightening for the public to also know why certain colleagues vote no. And I think they have a right to vote no, whether it's because of a principal stance or they think it's too much incentive that's being granted. Because that's how we learn. I think sitting back just saying no for the sake of voting, voting no is not as productive as it can be. And I, I can't help but notice how some people vote no on this one and yes on others. So it would be helpful to just kinda know, why are you a no vote on a particular bill instead of just voting no? I think that our body is getting kinda goofy, if you will. Not to be demeaning in saying that, but, you know, I know there are different groups out there that are anti-this, anti-that. And you get attached to them and so you take a walk on a bill, your video is not acting right, your audio is not acting right. You, you walk off the floor. I mean, you do different things to give yourself cover. But that's not what leadership is all about. Take a stance and say no or say yes. And tell people, let's educate people why you are no vote on these incentives. Because you think that, you know, two million dollars in a TIF is just way too much, but you could, you know, work with it if it was one point five. That's how we learn and it's okay. And I agree with the Alderman from the sixth ward. Everybody can't come to committee hearings. And so this is your opportunity to ask questions and you should ask questions. But all these like just no for the sake of no is not helpful. Because then we're sitting back scratching our head going, now, what was that about? And, and then we have colleagues that came into office, you know, I reject corporate welfare and I'm not for tax abatements and TIFs and all that stuff. And then you get here and you realize, ooh, it's not that simple. You know, I, I, I need to save jobs for people in my community across this city. There's a tax base that we have to protect. And so it's not always, you know, black and white, cut and dry. A lot of times you gotta put some real thought into this. Now, are there some areas that are probably getting too much? I think so. Okay. And there are areas that people are not paying any attention to. But I tell you one thing, I look forward to being the chairman of HUDs because it will be a new day. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board. I agree with my colleague about that you can't, from the sixth, who says you can't always go to committee meetings. But I disagree with her about that it's ridiculous to take things off of the consent calendar. Before, I was, when I was Alderman from the twentieth, we didn't have this consent calendar. This was something that was added since I came back. And I was surprised because sometimes you can let things get away from you. And so you miss it. So it doesn't take the one alderperson and you cannot have any consent calendar. Anytime you want to, you can just object to the whole consent calendar. Because you have a right to have your vote, vote recorded. So there's nothing ridiculous about. What's ridiculous is saying that it's ridiculous that you wanna take things off of the consent calendar. And on top of that, there's not a punishment. None of these are going down and flaming votes of no. And the reason why I'm voting present instead of no on some of them, because I didn't put out a statement, which we, we had decided we were gonna do Wednesday. But it is, I, I am, my eyes are wide open, cause this is my second time I've gone through school closings. And they're closing them all in North St. Louis. I spent my entire Christmas holiday going back through and reading the DLV Board of Education and reading about all the kids who got discriminated in North St. Louis and then the silly things they did to take money out of our school boards. And now I'm here, tw- fifteen, seventeen years later, they're doing the same thing. I live in North St. Louis where the whole time they had the South Board, we didn't have an appointee at, from North St. Louis. The people came from South St. Louis and out in the county. The guy in the county had more to say about our school closings than the people in North St. Louis. We didn't exist. So yes, this is very mild what I'm doing by saying I want this to be a case by case analysis. But I can do much more than that. So I would suggest people get in there and read their rules, which I do, because in the rules committee, we bring people in to talk. So we did not intend to have a question by, at least I didn't, to ask every alderman about what their redevelopment plan was or why they were getting this. I intend to, if we have questions, to bring them in and to talk about it in rules. I specifically talked to the Alderman from the sixteenth, because I didn't want people to get the idea that we were only gonna vote yes on things in North St. Louis. I actually realized there are things in South St. Louis and there are places, and I said that, the twentieth and the twenty-fifth, where they need that. So I specifically did that to bring the tension that we're not gonna just say no to everything except for North St. Louis. There's a great deal of North St. Louis that needs to be taken care of. But there's also a great deal of, there's some parts in South St. Louis that also needs to be taken care of. But I do have some questions about people, I wanna know what your houses are selling for and why you're getting ten percent, ninety-five percent of your houses are selling for five hundred thousand and four hundred thousand or whatever. I myself have tried not to use tax abatement. And I, I wanna say, I did, I wasn't talking about the Alderman from the twenty-fifth, if he thinks I am. That wasn't what I was doing. But I don't use tax abatement myself, cause I've been able, even in North St. Louis, to build projects without tax abatement most times. And so I don't do that, okay? I'm, I am committed to the St. Louis Public Schools. It is more important than giving developers big handouts, cause they can get it. I don't need to, right now, I told everybody else I'm vote present or yes, because I don't need to get into it. But I, I have no problem saying why I'm voting no to a ten year, ninety-five percent when you, you can get five hundred or six hundred thousand dollars for a bill. I think that is ridic- I mean, for a house. I think that is ridiculous that we're doing that and we need to stop that. But we didn't give notice, so my compromise with myself was not to vote no, just to vote present, but to put people on notice that that was not gonna be the case. And for the people who want to vote no, they have a right to vote no. They do not have to explain to you or they can if they want to. That's their right. You can't jump up and down and say rules are good for somebody and some things and then not others. We all need to read our rules better. We need to root our, read our legislation better. I tried very hard to follow it. And so we're not, I wasn't trying to, we're not trying to punish anybody. People are voting their conscience and this thing about tax abatement has been ongoing for a long time. And we need some improvement, because the answers that we got from Dale Russack and then the paperwork that we got from him was eye opening about the difference in when there's tax abatement and when there isn't. And there needs to be some more cleaning up, because you're not taking the brunt of your schools all closing. But we in North St. Louis, the very people who the lawsuits were about, about them discriminating, about getting education, about books, but also about, read the, read the original lawsuits. It's also about they weren't putting the money in to fix these schools up. Then they yanked all the schools out, sent them out to someplace else, sent the children out to someplace else. And then they're leaving all of these schools in my neighborhood with no plan except for to close more of them. So whatever I have to do and however you're uncomfortable about it, I don't give a damn, okay? I do not care who's uncomfortable about it. Close your schools. And then how are you punishing the very people who had the original lawsuit? The lawsuit wasn't about any children in South St. Louis, because they were giving all the money to South St. Louis. They were giving the books, they were repairing a building, they were doing everything. And again, I always tell you, go back and look, and I don't pull that article when the, cause they did make, besides sending black children to South St. Louis, they sent white teachers to North St. Louis. And those white teachers moaned and said, oh my God, Florida doesn't have all the chemical charts. They didn't cause a discrimination. And instead of saying, we're never gonna punish North St. Louis, cause we've discriminated them against them enough, we continue to discriminate against them. So if anybody is uncomfortable, cause I'm asking questions, then I'll ask more and I'll take every damn thing off of the consent calendar, cause I'm not gonna have my schools closed. Education is gonna happen in North St. Louis and you're not gonna just keep punishing us because of past discrimination from white folks in South St. Louis. And any white folks in South St. Louis that don't like it, I don't care. Move your butt over here to North, North St. Louis and pull up on what we put up with and find out how many times people cheat us, cause we don't know. And then they say, oh, well, we're helping you out. We're moving your children out. We're gonna leave these big raggedy buildings, but we're getting ready to close again. They, in two thousand and five, this shame of Ron Jackson, Darnetta Clinkstall and Bob Archibald came in and took over and just closed schools. We took our schools back, then the state said, oh, we can't run those schools. And again, for sixteen or seventeen years, nobody in North St. Louis had a say about what happened. Because the people who could appoint people, that being the president of Board of Aldermen, the mayor and the governor of the city of St. Louis, did not think anything of us in North St. Louis to say, let me appoint not one person in all those times from North St. Louis. So I don't care about anybody getting upset about us asking and talking about, oh, I think that's ridiculous. I think it's ridiculous that you sit over there with your white privilege and think it's ridiculous when black people fight for their own neighborhoods.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-third.
So I just wanna say, I agree and disagree with my friend from the twenty-fifth ward, the Alderman from twenty-fifth. I agree, you know what, maybe the third reading wasn't the place to do this. But I would say that we should not be putting on the perfection consent calendar then, so that we can make changes to them. Maybe that's the place to really debate, you know, when it comes out of committee. So when the Alderman from the sixth says, well, she can't make them, well, hopefully she makes the board meetings. And if, if you're at the board meeting and we, you know, we have the stuff, we have the opportunity at that time, especially on a consent calendar, not to put them on a perfection consent, so that when it does get to the third reading, they've been vetted and it might stop all of this. You know, I, I, I would agree with the Alderman from the first. I, you know, I'm, I'm both ways on this. I'm, I'm very much. But, but maybe the third reading isn't the place, maybe by the time they hit the third reading, they should have been already discussed, vetted, if we think an abatement's too much. Because when things come out of a committee, a lot of times we have floor substitutes to those. And maybe that's actually the place that we can actually say, this one or that one really shouldn't have this much or that much. You know, cause we can speak at the committee, but it still could come out of the committee. So, you know, it, I just wanted to bring that up. Maybe the third reading isn't the place to do this. Maybe it is on the perfection as opposed to perfection consent.
All right, thank you, Alderman from the twenty-third. Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'll be brief. I, I, I agree with a lot of what, what folks have said here about being more careful about where we use incentivization, looking at things on a more case by case basis. I, I, I really welcome this discussion. It, it's, it's a bit strange, the board bill that it happened on, but there's there, there is definitely a need to have more scrutiny on abatements, particularly in wards like mine, where we, we don't need abatement on single family home in wards like mine. There, there are wards like my colleague Jesse Todd. When, when I talk to him about abatements, that it's important to drive economic development in his ward and to drive people there and to keep the housing stock that's there. So I, I, I agree with my colleague from the first, we need to be looking at these on a, on a case by case basis and making sure that when we hand money to developers and we take it away from our school kids, that that's the, the thing that we, we all should be doing. This particular bill is a habitat for a humanity project and this is the kind of bill that I think some incentivization is appropriate on. So I'll be supporting this, but I, I'm happy to talk to folks down the road about the specifics of any incentivization moving forward. And with that, I yield. Thank you.
All right. It's been moved by Alderman from the twentieth, second, by Alderman from the ninth, that we, third reading, final pass, board bill one sixteen. Is there a request for a previous roll? Objection to previous roll. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Gracia.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Graff.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Ty.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Collins Mohammed.
No.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Bakoro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cole.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard. Twenty-seven aye votes and one no vote.
My vote is standing motion, Alderman from twenty-third, read and final pass, board bill one sixteen, board bill one twenty-five.
Board bill one twenty-five sponsored by Alderman Ballmer and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated September twenty-second, twenty twenty for the forty-nine fourteen Daggett Avenue area in the city of St. Louis.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on third reading, final passage of board bill one twenty-five.
Move to third reading, final pass, board bill one twenty-five.
Move by Alderman from the tenth, second, by Alderman from the fourteenth, any discussion?
Roll call.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman, you are muted.
Present.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Gracia? Alderman Carter?
Aye.
Alderman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderman Martin? Alderman Graff?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Green?
No.
Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Rhodey's aye.
Alderman Todd? Alderman Davis?
Aye for Todd.
Thank you. Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vucaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Con?
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Navarro?
Aye.
President Reed?
Uh.
Alderman Hubbard? Alderman Gracia?
Aye.
Alderman Martin?
Aye.
Number twentieth was the deadline to get anything on the ballot for April.
Twenty-six I votes, one no vote, and one vote in present.
My vote is staying in motion, Alderman from the tenth and third read and finally pass Board Bill one twenty-five.
Board Bill one twenty-eight sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for the fifty-two sixty-six Maple Avenue redevelopment area.
Alderman from twenty-six, you recognize on the third reading and final passes of Board Bill one twenty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to third read and final pass, finally pass Board Bill one twenty-eight.
We've got Alderman from twenty-six, second about Alderman from twenty-second, any discussion?
Roll call.
It's been moved in the second that we third read and final pass Board Bill one twenty-eight. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus? Alderman Tyus, you're muted.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard? Alderman Gracia?
Aye.
Alderman Carter?
Aye.
Alderman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman, thank you. Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Graff?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Todd? Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vucaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Con?
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Navarro?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard? Twenty-eight I votes.
My vote is staying in motion of the Alderman from the twenty-sixth and third read and finally pass Board Bill one twenty-eight.
Excuse me, I think I had a present vote. Oh, I'm sorry, I did, I'm sorry, miss a wrong one, I'm sleepy now, I did.
Yeah, that's probably the next one. Madam Clerk?
Board Bill one thirty sponsored by Alderman Spencer and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated September twenty-second, twenty-twenty for the thirty-six twenty Texas Avenue area.
Alderman from twentieth, you recognize third read and final passage of Board Bill one thirty.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for third reading, final passage of Board Bill one thirty.
Move by Alderman from twentieth and the tenth, second about Alderman from the ninth, any discussion? Moved in second that we third read and finally pass Board Bill one thirty. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Previous roll.
Is there an objection to previous roll? Objection, motion carries.
Board Bill one thirty-one sponsored by Alderman Gunther and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated September twenty-second, twenty-twenty for the thirty-one seventy through thirty-one seventy-two Oregon Avenue.
Alderman from the ninth, you recognize on third read and final passage of Board Bill one thirty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill one thirty-one.
Been moved by Alderman from the ninth and retain a second. Uh, second about Alderman from the eighth, any discussion? Alderman from the twenty-second?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, with Alderman from the ninth, will you yield for questions?
Alderman from the ninth, will you yield the question? Alderman from the um twenty-second, please proceed.
Uh, thank you, Alderman. Can you tell us a little bit about this development project and uh why it needs tax abatement?
I would love to. Um, so thirty-one seventy-two seventy-four Oregon Avenue um was a four-family uh that had a major fire. Um, if the, if you looked at Google Maps, if you put the uh the property in Google, um, you can see uh that even before the major fire, that it was a boarded-up uh and rough-looking building. Uh, the back wall has fallen down, uh, the roof has caved in, years of water damage. Um, and so when I was trying to find a developer for this property, uh, it's also important to look at the properties surrounding it. So please take a look at thirty-one seventy-four Oregon next door to the south, which has been vacant for years, and across the street, thirty-one seventy-nine Oregon, uh, which also has the entire back wall and sidewall collapsed as well as thirty-one seventy-seven Oregon and thirty-one seventy-five Oregon, which are LRA-owned. Um, so uh when looking at this project uh being a major uh rehab opportunity that could possibly spur some more investment in that that corner, that little piece of Oregon, um, I came to an agreement with the developers that we are offering a five-year fifty percent abatement on it. Uh, that agreement was able to get a four-hundred-thousand-dollar uh building permit taken out on that property. And uh the goal is then to have the four properties surrounding it uh also see development because of what what I was able to do here. So um I welcome the questions. I welcome uh the discussion that Alderman from the first uh has created with uh asking questions about these. Um, but uh Alderman from the twenty-second, that is exactly why uh this project was offered a five-year fifty percent abatement to try to spur some something on that block.
And would this be uh restored as a four-family or is it going to be a two-family? How many bedrooms?
It's going to be a two-family, um, two-family, two uh townhouses, um, I believe three bedrooms on each side.
Okay, um, uh, first of all, I want to say that I think it's a perfect candidate for tax abatement. Um, would you believe that you have done more tax abatement bills since you've been Alderman than I have?
I, you know, Alderman, I'd have to go through, but um I would say that everything that you have requested, I've supported. And uh I'm pretty certain that uh you've supported everything that I put through too, so.
Now, I'm just making a point that um certainly there's good development going in your community and you have learned the value of tax abatement and how it can be used as a good tool in order to spur development, as you said. But I certainly remember that you were somebody that was very anti-tax abatement and TIPS and so on and so forth. So I always like to use you as an example of somebody who, once you get here, you realize all that rhetoric that you talked about before you got here is just not as simple. And you've done good work with your tax abatement projects. I'm actually jealous because I haven't been able to do many, you know, chapter ninety-nines or tax abatement bills because people don't look at my community the same way they look at your community. So um I I certainly will be supporting this, but I would just want to point out that, you know, these are the type of projects that we need in our communities that deserve tax abatement. And we can't go around just being anti-tax abatement, anti-TIPS people because of the school system. Because at the end of the day, we could sit with a vacant lot or a vacant building for ten or fifteen years and get forty dollars a year. Or we can invest in this property, in your case, five years. And then in the sixth year, it's going to reap a lot of dividends. A- and so it ain't that cut and dry, you know, as people oftentimes say. So again, um, you know, congratulations. Uh, I I hope to see more of that type of development in my ward. Um, and no further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
Alderman from the twenty-first?
Thank you, Mr. President. Will the Alderman from the ninth yield to questioning?
Alderman from the ninth, will you yield a question to the Alderman from the twenty-first?
Absolutely.
Alderman from twenty-first, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Alderman, can you describe the the neighborhood in which will, in which this property will be receiving tax abatement? What is the neighborhood demographics? What is the income? What is the racial makeup? Uh, and what does the commercial district look like?
Uh, well, that's a lot of questions that I don't have all that data in front of me. Um, I will explain though exactly that this is the Benton Park West neighborhood. Um, the Benton Park West neighborhood um kinda has uh a couple different areas. And and as we all know, um, a lot of times in the city of St. Louis, things are block by block. Uh, a block away, I could have great development going on that I would never support and and have honestly turned down uh requests for abatements. Um, however, when we look block by block, this is a block that, as I mentioned, um, had a building with a major fire with the back wall out, surrounded by four other properties that have walls down that every week I'm calling the building division to get boarded up because of squatters, because of drug activity. It's a, it's a drain on our resources. Um, so this particular block, uh, this investment will help us to spur uh not only new investment around it, but hopefully bring in new tax-paying uh neighbors uh uh to the city of St. Louis that will be able to start keeping an eye out for their neighborhoods, um, and start keeping an eye out for that block. Um, so uh how does the neighborhood look? Uh, Benton Park West is majority African-American. Um, it uh, the thirty-one hundred block is a few blocks off of Cherokee Street. Um, but if you were to go to Oregon and Cherokee, you'll see that uh the storefronts are not as vibrant as they are in other parts of Cherokee. Um, and so this is kind of uh the the Benton Park West neighborhood uh that pretty much is a triangle from Cherokee on the south, uh, South Jefferson on the east, and then Gravoy is kind of the the angle, the triangle that's on the uh west side. Um, this uh, this location is on what is the further west side of the neighborhood, um, which is uh starting to see some more activity, but has many blocks where I have a majority of the properties vacant, burnt out, uh, owner occupa, or uh, um, you know, owners just kind of left them. So um, so this is definitely an area that uh that I see as uh keeping the trend of development going in the area. So I I can't answer, um, I have no idea in front of me what economics are. Um, we can look that up on the census, but um hopefully that somewhat answers your question.
Uh, not really, but that's okay. So Alderman, and and you know, when we when we do redevelopment plans, can I ask you another question, Alderman? Is that, is that fine?
Go for it.
Thank you, thank you. When we do redevelopment plans, of course, we do blighting studies. Uh, do you think the area in which we'll be receiving tax abatement, do you think is blighted? And how would you define blight in your own expertise?
Well, I would absolutely say the area is blighted, otherwise I would have never considered this. Um, uh, the, how do I describe blight? Um, I gave you an example of the four houses surrounding it being boarded up and vacant, uh, walls falling, uh, back walls that are laying on the ground, roofs that are laying in the basement. That's how I would describe blighting. This isn't a uh a blight to where it says, oh, the sidewalks are cracked, which I completely appreciate the pushback that has happened over the last four years on some of these abatements to where they say, well, look, this sidewalk's cracked where there's trash in the corner, so it deserves to be blighted. This property right here is what blight is, so.
So in your expertise, blight to you is a few houses next to a property that's going to be receiving tax abatement? A few houses next to that property that's sitting derelict and vacant?
Uh, Alderman, this block uh probably has over fifty percent vacancy. And again, it's it's uh, you know, we're looking block by block here to re-rebuild our city. I think it's the only way we can rebuild our city is going block by block. And uh this part of the neighborhood uh really can use this as a catalyst to get other, including city-owned properties, including an LRA property. Um, and I have very few LRA properties. Over the last four years, we've got most of them developed. Um, and this one hopefully will spur development on uh the ones surrounding it.
All right, so thank you, Alderman. So when you say fifty percent vacant, do you mean just homes that's currently not occupied? Or do you mean homes that are condemned and falling apart? Like, when when you say vacancy, what do you mean? Can you give me a little, a little stronger description of vacancy?
Absolutely, uh, you know, a lot of them are properties that are empty. Um, but this is, uh, this one was a property that has a roof in the basement, burnt out, and the entire back brick wall laying on the ground and the properties surrounding it, the property across the street from it. I I believe I said it was thirty, let me look really quick here, thirty-one seventy-nine Oregon. Uh, take a look at the pictures, thirty-one seventy-nine, pull it up on on Google Maps and take a look at what blight is in my neighborhood. And, you know, this is, this is kind of one of the things, you know, I I like preservation in the city. Um, there's plenty of properties on this block that uh that are candidates for demolition, but we've held back on demolishing them because we'd rather uh have these properties developed. And even if that means that uh that someone is going to be able to develop it with, you know, rebuilding entire walls, um, rebuilding entire structures, the entire wood structure of this building has to be rebuilt. Um, so yeah, that's, that's why I consider blight. And um, and that's why I supported this, this program, or I I supported this uh redevelopment plan.
Okay, so again, just for clarification, I just want to make sure that I'm straight on this, Alderman. So again, blight to you is a few houses that are empty and not currently occupied, regardless of the condition of the home that's next to the property.
That uh it's absolutely condition of the home. Um, I I think I was clear on that. It's absolutely condition of the property.
Hmm, that's interesting, interesting. Okay, uh, Mr. President, I have no further questions for the Alderman from the ninth. Thank you, Alderman, for answering for some of my questions.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the ninth and second about Alderman from the eighth that we third read and final pass Board Bill one thirty-one. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus? Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Evans? Alderman Hubbard? Alderman Gracia? Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin. Alderman Grass.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
No.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro.
President.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con. Alderman Clerk Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
No.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Martin. Alderman Con.
Aye.
24 aye votes, two no votes, and one vote in present.
By vote, by vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman, from 9th and 3rd read and finally pass Board Bill 131.
Board Bill 137 sponsored by Alderman and Spencer, an ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated September 22nd, 2020 for the 4021 Iowa Avenue.
Alderman from the 20th, you recognize on 3rd reading, final passage of Board Bill 137.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for a third reading, final passage of Board Bill 132.
Uh, 30, n- no, that's not the board bill. Um, it's Board Bill 137.
137, I'm sorry, I'm looking at it incorrectly.
Okay, uh, would you like to restate your mo- motion?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for a third reading, final passage of Board Bill 137.
Thank you. It's been moved by Alderman from 20th, seconded by Alderman from 9th. Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we third read and file pass Board Bill 137. Is there a request for previous row?
Previous row.
Here are the objection, motion carries.
Board Bill 142 sponsored by Alderman Howard, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4320 through 4330, 4350, and 43 rear, 4350 rear South Kings Highway redevelopment area.
Alderman from the 14th, you recognize on the 3rd read and final passage of Board Bill 142.
Mr. President and colleagues, I move for final passage of Board Bill 142.
Agreed.
Your reading and final passage, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you, it's been moved by Alderman from the 14th, seconded by Alderman from the 22nd. Any discussion? Alderman from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. With the Alderman from the 14th yield.
Alderman from the 14, uh, Alderman from the 15th, please proceed.
My apologies, I haven't quite kept up with this development probably as much as I should, but could you just give a little bit of background on um on what this is and the, um, cause I believe it's, it's apartments. And do you know what the the rental is or um or how much rent is going to be in these? Could you just give us a little bit of background?
Okay, the, the property then quite, you know, that's to be developed was formerly belonged to the uh US Army National Guard, the um, a auto dealer, uh auto mark kind of thing, and then the uh St. Mary Magdalene properties, which two of the three were untaxed at the time. Uh, this will be uh, the first phase will be a 200, I think it's 25 apartments market rate, ranging in um, uh, uh rents from, I believe, 800 to $1,200.
Okay, thank you. Um, and the, sorry, my computer is not opening up the file at the moment, but is it 15 years at 90 or 90%?
Yes, I believe that's what it is. I, I don't recall. I haven't revisited recently. I think it's 15 years at 90%, and then uh five years at um, no, it's 15 years at nine, I, I think, yeah, 15 years at 90 and then uh five years at 95.
Okay, and is there any concern at all um that, you know, they'll come back in 15 years and say, well, this is abs- obsolete now and, you know, we need further incentive because, you know, this isn't, you know, that's just a very long period of time for.
Well, Alderman, I don't really have a crystal ball, but I will say this. I've lived in this neighborhood for 70 years. Um, in the last 30 years, this, this property has been vacant or in decline. Um, I can't anticipate, and if you would ask me uh 50 years ago if I would be selling that property and it would be developed as apartments, I would have told you no way. So, I mean, I, I, you know, we can't anticipate what's gonna happen 20 years from now. I can't anticipate what's gonna happen tomorrow. So um, you're asking a question that I really don't have a clue or or know how to answer.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. I, you know, while I do have some concern about the length of time of the abatement, um, I also do think that those rents are fairly reasonable for uh for this area. And um, and I, I do recognize kind of having across the street from there the challenges um that 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 intersection has created, so I appreciate you.
Well, and, and as you, you're probably very familiar with Garcia's and their developments in your ward. Uh, they have just recently uh redeveloped the YWCA that was there that was vacant and and languishing for probably at least 15 years. So I think this is a a good upswing for this area and will provide needed housing for the medical centers. It's on a direct bus route um to the uh BJC, St. Louis University. And and i- in all honesty, this, the, the price point on these apartments will be a little less than the ones in the central corridor, um, but still accessible and still in the city.
Yes, okay, thank you. I appreciate it. No further questions.
All right, any further discussion? Um, Alderman from the 23rd. Just very quickly, this is one I support because I agree, St. Mary's hasn't paid taxes at all, so.
At St. Mary Magdalene.
Uh, St. Mary Magdalene, I'm sorry, but it hasn't been paying taxes at all. So at least now it'll generate something. And uh for that area, which has been in decline from the Avalon Show, that's just not there and all that, uh, I was glad to see Garcia Properties taking this on uh and and helping move that area forward. All right.
Just for clarity.
Uh, uh, Alderman, no, you don't have to, you don't have to. Alderman from the 6th.
Uh, thank you very much. This is a very much a point of privilege. I just uh wanted to mention that um this redevelopment, um, I'm excited that there is something being spurred in this area, but I went to St. Mary Magdalene. Um, my parents spent a lot of uh their times when they were younger. Um, they lived in Walnut Park, but they would come down to the parish center at St. Mary Magdalene um to attend dances uh led by a band I cannot remember the name of. Um, Monsignor Meyer ran um the soccer club there. He was a professional soccer player. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, just so many really good memories of St. Mary Magdalene. Um, I'm sad that uh the, the parish center is gone. We uh, we had a kick-ass bowling facility. We had to ta- we were required to take bowling as part of our uh PE requirements in elementary school. Um, and and I guess I'm really glad that uh Alderman Howard, you have something that seems really meaningful to replace it, um, but it's hard to see it go. That's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It's been moved by Alderman from the 14th, seconded by Ald- Ald- um, and from the 22nd that we third read and file pass Board Bill 142. Is there a request for previous row?
Objection.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus.
President.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin. Alderman Grass.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Rhodey's aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderman Clerk Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Martin.
Uh, go ahead.
What's your question, Brett?
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
26 aye votes and one vote in present.
All right, by your vote, stand motion, Alderman from the 14th and 3rd read, filing pass Board Bill 142.
Board Bill 77 as amended sponsored by Alderman Mohammed and Alderman Vacaro, an ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the city of St. Louis a proposed amendment to the Charter of the City of St. Louis to maintain the Board of Alderman as body of 28 Alderman representing 28 wards and preventing its reduction beginning December 31st, 2021 to a body of 14 Alderman representing 14 wards as called for under Article 1, Section 3 of the City of St. Louis Charter, providing for an election to be held for voting on the proposed amendment and the manner for the voting and for the publication, certification, deposit, and recording of this ordinance contained in emergency clause.
All right, um, Alderman from the 21st, you recognize on 3rd read and final passes of Board Bill 77 as amended.
Mr. President, I move for the, I move for the final passage of Board Bill 77 as amended.
Agreed.
It's been moved by the Alderman from 22nd, seconded by um whoever seconded it. Please restate that second. Was it 22nd?
No, 22nd second, that's right, move out.
Yeah, 22nd second, all right. It was moved by Alderman from the, from the 21st and seconded by Alderman from 22nd. Alderman from the 21st, please re- please, please, uh, continue.
Thank you, Mr. President. I renew my motion.
All right, any further discussion, any further discussion? Uh, it's been moved and seconded by the Alderman from the 21st that we third read and file pass Board Bill 77 as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Garcia.
No.
Alderman Calder.
No.
Alderman Rice.
No.
Alderman Gunther.
No.
Alderman Ballmer.
No.
Alderman Martin. Alderman Grass.
No.
Alderman Murphy.
No.
Alderman Howard.
Pass.
Alderman Green.
No.
Alderman Odenberg.
Pass.
Alderman Rhodey.
No.
Alderman Todd.
Yes.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
No.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Alderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Vacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Pass.
Alderman Clerk Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Pass.
Alderman Navarro.
No.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Martin. Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
No.
Alderman Con.
No.
Alderman Boyd.
Yes.
15 aye votes. And 13 no votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the 21st and 3rd read and finally pass for uh Board Bill back to my page, 77 as amended.
That is the extent of our reading report of engrossment.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bills 76, 79, 109, 110, 116, 125, 128, 130, 131, 137, 142, 147, 149, 156, and 77 as amended.
All other business being suspended, the president shall an open session of fix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was having issue, tech issues getting on. Um, I, I don't know if I can be recorded as a no vote or not.
I, I don't know if I can be recorded as a no vote or not.
No, we've already called the boat, vote and called it. But you can report to the Journal that 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 you would have liked to have been on record as a no vote. You can.
Uh, Mr. President, can we state the rules as it pertains to technology?
No, we're, we can, we're not, we're not getting into all that. The vote has, the vote has been called.
Mr. President, if you don't mind, if you could just.
We're moving on. Alderman, Alderman from, Alderman. Alderman find some other time to run.
No, no, I, I'm serious. Mr. President, with all due respect, my question is, what are our rules as they pertain to having technology issues?
Why don't, why don't you ask the, if you want to inquire further about that, just ask the clerk. Let me ask you a question.
You're the president of the board. If you don't know the rules, that's fine. If you could just state the rules.
Once the vote has been called, once the vote has been called, and the vote was called a few minutes ago, you think we can go back and redo that? It doesn't work that way.
Technology issues, Mr. President.
It does not work that way. The vote was called. Your technology issues are your technology issues. You've been in and out of this meeting several times today. We're moving on. Alderman from the seventeenth, can you take over the rest of the meeting because I have, I have I have an emergency I have to attend to.
Okay.
Sent you an earlier message.
All right.
So you would have to.
Madam, madam on the agenda?
Yeah, the courtesy resolution is done, so you need to first read in the resolutions. That's been done and second reading of resolutions. So essentially, second reading of resolution, miscellaneous unfinished business announcements from there.
All right.
So Alderman from the seventh on the second reading of resolutions. You get, you, you're there?
I, I'm here, Mr. President.
Not to Alderman from the, from the embasging Alderman from the seventeen.
Okay. Second read, second reading of resolutions.
Resolution seventy-six sponsored by Alderman Calder, Larson Capital Management LLC in the city of St. Louis Enhanced Enterprise Zone.
Chair recognizes the Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you. I don't know what to call you. Mr. President Rhodey, members of the board, I move to adopt Resolution seventy-six. Second.
Been moved and seconded?
Very briefly, it's been a long day. Resolution seventy-six is a enhanced enterprise zone. Tax abatement seeking a ten-year eighty percent abatement on one hundred North Broadway, which is a a large high-rise downtown that has recently been purchased by Larson Capital Management. I'm pretty excited about this project. Larson, which is a, a investment fund based in Chesterfield, is moving its headquarters from Chesterfield to downtown St. Louis and a hundred and twenty jobs and purchased a building. A very distressed building that they bought out of receivership that the previous owners walked away from. So this is an abatement really on the improvements they're planning above and beyond. So the building currently is about forty-five percent occupied. It pays roughly seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year in, in property taxes. It will obviously continue to do so. They're intending on spending approximately seventeen million dollars in improvements to the building, stabilizing it, leasing it up, and then so there'll be an abatement on some of those future improvements, but the building will still have a sizable, you know, tax benefit to the city. And frankly, if we can get this building leased up, the taxes generated by, by earnings tax and sales taxes downtown will far exceed you know, what we're, you know, the, the cost of this abatement, which is about two point seven million dollars over the life. So with that, I'll happily answer any questions. Or I'll renew my motion if everyone would like to go home. I'll renew my motion.
I don't believe anyone has their. Oh. Alderman from the third. Yes, sir. Just for clarification. Can you restate how much the school board will be getting every year during this tax abatement period, the paid period?
Uh, yeah, hold on. Let me see if I have that in front of me. So the school board right now, let's see, gets, so what they get, what do they get? About sixty percent of the, of the, of a property tax? Right? Is it more than that? Somebody, I guess now I'm asking questions.
Someone around there. About sixty percent is correct.
Okay, so they're currently getting about, they're currently getting just shy half a million dollars a year from this property that goes to the school district of that close to eight hundred thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar tax. The abatement here, with the abatement, they'll realize on top of that's four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, about an additional eighty thousand a year will go to them during the abatement. It's not a full abatement. It's just that it's an eighty percent on the improvements only. So we're not, obviously, we're not taking the base to zero. The base stays very high.
Understood, and it's just, just abating the improvements, right?
Correct.
So this is good for clarification, of course, with all the things that are going out there. The city is downtown, so it's good for folks to know. This isn't saying that the property taxes that they're paying right now is going to be lessened to make room for this development. Or is it saying that these developers won't be paying any taxes at all? They will be paying what it is they're paying now, plus the improvements over the next ten to fifteen, I mean, not the improvements, but minus the improvements that they make over the next ten to fifteen, what, eighty-five percent, correct?
Eighty, eighty percent. Yes, that's correct. And, and, and you know, this is something that, you know, we've discussed in HUDs and, 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 you know, given the, the challenges in the downtown office market and frankly, particularly the challenges we've seen in the last year with COVID and, and the high vacancy rates, this building was really struggling even pre-COVID. The, the previous owner walked away from it. So, you know, between moving a lot of jobs from the suburbs downtown, which you think will be a big benefit, not all, not only to downtown, but to the city's general fund through the earnings tax. This is on the, these are, these are high-paying financial jobs. I think this will be it'll definitely, I mean, the city's analysis shows it's going to be a, a net positive for the school district and for the city.
Great, great. Well, I appreciate it. Just, you know, want, want to make sure we at least are putting that information out there. We don't know who's watching. It's good for us to start at least being transparent, especially with those questionable developments that people have. So I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you.
You know, great job on the project. No further questions, Mr. President. Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman from the first is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's Alderman from the seventh. Will you?
Yes.
Thank you. So how much, how long is this abatement? And I know it's on improvements. And also, do you know how much tax, how, how much taxes will be paid when this abatement is over?
The, the abatement period is, it's ten years at eighty percent. You know, I, it'll, it's sort of, Alderwoman, it'll depend on the, you know, the, I guess, if they can release this building up between the twenty million dollars in improvements they plan on investing, plus if you can fully lease this building, I mean, the value of it should increase considerably. So in its sort of challenged state, half, half, more than half empty, they're paying, you know, close to eight hundred thousand dollars a year in property taxes. With the improvements and with stabilizing the building, I would anticipate that number will, after ten years, it should go up considerably. It should be closer to, you know, million two, million three.
I just want to say, after listening to the Alderman from the twenty-second ward, it broke my heart to hear he'd say he wished he would have something in the way of tax abatement, but people don't look at his community like that. That is what I've always thought that incentives would be for, even if it means some places downtown or in the central quarter didn't get incentives. I would support more incentives so that I can't hear Alderman in North St. Louis say what he just said. Makes my heart sad. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Have no further questions, Mr. President.
Hey, I see no other hands raised. Alderman from the seventh, you recognize to close.
Thank you. I renew my motion to a final pass Resolution seventy-six.
Roll call.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Present.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Iggracia. Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderwoman Grass.
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Murphy, was that a aye? Thank you. Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vakoro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Present.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Iggracia. Alderman Mohammed. Twenty-two aye votes and two vote in present.
By your vote, you've sustained the motion of the Alderman from the seventh. That concludes the second reading resolutions.
That is the extent of the second reading, second reading of resolutions.
Miscellaneous and unfinished business?
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday, January the eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one, the Board of Aldermen will be closed in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King holiday. Tuesday, January the nineteenth, the COVID-nineteen Special Committee will have a meet at nine AM via webinar. Public Safety will have a meet at one PM via webinar. Wednesday, January the twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, HUDs will have a meet at nine AM via webinar. Rules will have a meet at ten AM via webinar. Ways and Means will have a meet at one PM via webinar. Thursday, January the twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one, Legislation Committee will have a meet to, uh, two-thirty PM via webinar. Friday, January the twenty-second, Board Board meeting, ten AM via webinar. That is the extent of the announcements.
All right. Five hours and forty-four minutes after we started, are there any other announcements? Anybody else got anything to say?
I hope not.
Nobody?
Yep. No, real quick.
I can't, oh, we do have a, we do have an announcement. Okay, I knew you couldn't let me down. Alderwoman, who, who was that? Was that from the nineteenth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Alderwoman.
I just want to quickly say that on Martin Luther King Day, the Urban League will do their normal food and PPE distribution at Jamestown Mall. Also, I want to thank the Sigma fraternity for doing a cleanup and the Jeff Vanderloo neighborhood as well as providing free COVID and flu shots, and I welcome them to the neighborhood. They bought the Carver House next to Chambers Park, and I'm looking forward to their participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Oh, the Alderman from the twenty-second isn't going to let us out of here just yet. Alderman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I will announce that, make sure that people understand that the twenty-second ward is open for business. We will talk to any and all developers who are interested in coming into our neighborhood to help make this a better place to live, work, and play. Please feel free to contact me at boyj@stlouis.mo.gov or j o boy sixty-four at sbcglobal.net. I am eager to talk to you.
Thank you, Alderman. I see no other hands up. The Alderman from twenty-second is recognized for, excuse Alderman?
Okay, Mr. President, I wasn't sure that the Alderman from the third had his hand up. If, you know, this technology goes up and down.
I apologize. Alderman from the third, you're recognized.
Wait, technology what? We have problems with technology, huh?
All right, this is going to take me all of five seconds. I just wanted to say I appreciate, appreciate you all helping us, um, the board bill out today for the passage of reduction. Everybody may not be in agreement with it, but for those who were, I appreciate that. And just to, just to say, as we continue to move forward in the city, let's do the best we can to continue to work with each other and try to bridge this year whatever relationships that we may have broken. It's important for us to lead, and thousands of people are dependent on us. Thank you, Alderman.
You're here.
Voice of conciliator. All right. Excuse Alderman. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I am pleased to announce that everybody was here today.
Well, if, if that concludes it, there's no other business. The chair will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adjourn until next Friday, January the twenty-second, ten AM. Second.
Second.
By your motion, you've sustained the, by your vote, you've sustained the motion.
Part of order, Mr. Chairman. We do have to ask for a vote.
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. By your motion and your vote, you've sustained the, by your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderman from the twenty-second. We are all excused till next Friday, February, the, or January, oh, we're excused till when we meet next. Thank you.